This meeting of the Leon County School Board on July 23rd at the Aquilina Howell Building is now called to order. And our opening item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have a volunteer who would like to lead the Pledge of Allegiance? Somebody in the audience be willing to step up and start the pledge? Okay, Dr. Flanagan.
Hey.
Thank you. Come on up.
Good evening.
Wait, I'll stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are we going to sing the National Anthem? Yeah, can we use some song?
Thought for the day.
Okay. Great. We have some changes and additions. Would someone like to read those?
I will, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bell.
The Superintendent recommends approval of changes and additions to the July 23rd, 2019 School Board Meeting agenda as presented. Number one, add item 19.10, the Superintendent recommends Board approval of the surplus of property and vacant land purchased as is and sale agreement of 22-plus acre of property, parcel number 112542E00100, see Exhibit A, including Resolution 19.04. Negotiations of this item was finalized on Thursday, July 18, 2019. Item two, add 1911 memorandum of understanding between the School Board of Leon County, Florida, and the South City Foundation, Inc. The MOU language was finalized by all parties on Friday, July 19, 2019. Item three, 19.01, proposed tentative budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2020. Change the information in the public content to reflect new information concerning the mileage rates received from FLDOE. Four, 7.03, approval of personnel actions, July 23, 2019, replace documentation. Five, add item 21.21.01, report from Board Liaisons, Children's Services Council, School Board Member Striplin. I move the acceptance.
Second? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. And we are going to skip down to the school accountability updates. If there's anything else.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Member Superintendent. It is my pleasure to stand before you this evening to give you an update on school accountability, otherwise known as school grades. Before you is a manila folder, and within the contents of that folder is the PowerPoint for this evening and then supporting documentation that staff felt that would be most helpful to you as you work through individual, both district schools and district, all district schools in the district. Just as a refresher while we get oriented, school grades are composed of components, cell boxes, and each of those cell boxes represents either ELA, math or science at the elementary level, and then ELA, math, science, social studies at the middle school level, and then some other categories at the high school level. So just to draw your attention, ELA is composed of three areas. Achievement, and achievement is defined as the percentage of students who are at Level Three on the Florida Standards Assessment, which is administered in the spring. Learning gains overall, which is a very specific definition of a student moving through the achievement levels within the Florida Standards Assessment, and then the learning gains of the bottom 25 percent. So all schools in the district have a relative position of students who are in the bottom 25 percent. Theoretically, you could have a school of 100 percent Level Fives, but within the scale score, you have a bottom 25 percent. And so every school has a bottom 25 percent in ELA. The same component parts are in math, and then in science, there's just one test administered and it's required by the feds at elementary, middle, and high, and that is the science assessment, which is FCAT Science 2.0 that is administered generally at the end of April, beginning of May. Middle school, you can see the academic components that are associated with the middle school grades, ELA, math, science, and then just as a frame of reference, in middle school, the social studies component is civics. So that is a civics assessment that is administered at the end of the course, at the EOC for that course. And then there's this other component, now as we get to secondary level, that is beyond just the scope of students' performance on the standards. So in the middle school grade, there's an acceleration component. And so students who score Level Three on the seventh grade FSA in either ELA or math are identified by the state as individuals who should be accelerated. And that acceleration takes the [bleep] of two pathways. The first pathway is a high school credit math or science course on their middle school transcript. So what that would look like is, I scored a Level Three in seventh grade, the state by policy, by school grades, would say, hmm, she should probably be in Algebra One in eighth grade, because that would be the high school credit math course. But let's just say that my motivation isn't strong, perhaps I'm not really interested in math, my areas of expertise in social studies are humanities, then the opportunity for the school to earn acceleration points occurs in industry certifications. So for a student in that example, if they scored a Level Three in ELA or math in seventh grade, the state identifies them as a candidate for acceleration, and the school has two pathways forward, either through algebra, or in some cases they've accelerated them early, or geometry or biology, and then in, or through an industry certification offered at the middle school level. High school. High school is very similar to middle school, it just expands on the components slightly. So again, we have ELA, we have proficiency, learning gains, the bottom 25 percent, we have social studies, we have science, and we also have additional measures. The acceleration measure is now called college and career readiness, and then the other one is graduation rate. And so college and career readiness says that all students in high school should have the opportunity for college readiness work, which is defined as dual enrollment AP or IB credits, and specifically earning a passing score on those assessments, or a career pathway course, that they have identified and passed a state certification in a career pathway. Those two areas are in the college and career acceleration, school grade component at the high school level. And then at the high school level is the graduation rate. So those are, those different components are how we, how the state calculates school grades at the elementary, middle, and high school level.
So, does greater participation in certification programs provide a substantial lift or substantial reflection in the cumulative grade for the school?
It may if the students pass the industry certification. So it's not enough to take the course. At the end of the industry certification course, the CTE pathways, there are certain certification assessments they take. So, and I'm going to make a really, so you could take a business course, and in part of the business course, you learn how to use the Microsoft Office Suite, Word, Excel, PowerPoint, et cetera. At the end of that course, you take an industry certification on the Microsoft Office Suite. And if you pass that industry standardized assessment, you count in that area. But if you don't pass it, you don't count.
And I guess, most simply, unlike the other areas that are tested that provide a cumulative reflection of a student's knowledge or learning, here in these certification programs geared most specifically for that area of specialty, which is far less broad or expansive than you would find in the other curriculums, it would seem that at a greater level of participation, you almost kill two birds with one stone. You have opportunity to raise the bar for the kid, for the child, for the student to be better prepared upon graduation, but also, it also will provide some substantial uplift to an already existing school grade, right?
It creates uplift.
About the science of it all.
Yes, so the math of it, yes, so that, it creates uplift. I don't think substantial, because it's one of 11, it's 100 of 1,100 points, so I don't know that it's substantial.
Okay.
But it does create uplift, and it is absolutely an area that as educators, we have an opportunity to, an air quote, "control," you know, where we can say, every student, and we do this in our high schools, where we sit down and we talk to students, and they're either doing dual enrollment, they're doing advanced placement, or they're going into some sort of CTE program. And we work closely with Ms. Bell at Lively to make sure that the program, and some of our other colleges and universities around, to make sure that the pathways our students go into are viable, achievable on the certification assessments, and then also are part of this acceleration component of school grades.
I have one more question, ma'am. For those schools that are K through eight, like my Fort Braden, tell me how that score works with both kindergarten testing and middle school testing occurring simultaneously to give you just one grade for the school, right?
So, yes. So students in grades three through eight at our combination schools are the students who are assessed and part of the school grade for the purposes of accountability. So K1, in our district, K1, two students do not take any assessments that are part of any part of our school grades. And that's true statewide, but we don't test those students at all in terms of tracking or monitoring or any of that, other than through the curriculum. So grades three through eight take the state assessment in FSA and ELA and math. The seventh grade students take the civics exam, which is required by law, and the fifth and eighth grade students take the science exams as required by law. Separate from that, because there are middle school students at Fort Braden, they also, Fort Braden and Woodville, also earn acceleration opportunities for students because of the middle school component. And so what that looks like is students in eighth grade, you know, it would not, it's not best practice to just drop a student into an industry certification course in eighth grade because the state has said that's what needs to happen. What we do is we backwards map, and we really start working with students in elementary, at the elementary level, getting them prepared. And so the idea is that in a special area, in a wheel, that the students are able to have exposure to some of those basic computer standards, the technology standards, so that when they reach seventh or eighth grade, that they are able to have earned at some point in time in their middle school career an industry certification. But it is part of the school grade for any combination school, which is a K8 school.
Thank you.
Real quick, Gillian, if I could interject a couple of things, and there's a balance there, because we want kids to have options, and sometimes kids would like to take two music classes as opposed to taking an industry certification or something like that, although we know it would help with our school grades, it's not really where their interest is. So we don't want to force kids into a model or a pathway just for the sake of saving a school grade, so there's, there has to be some give and take there. Now, for kids that are interested, absolutely, and who otherwise qualify. Another piece is like Gillian mentioned and I've talked to you before, so there's 1,000 possible points with a high school, 900 possible points with a middle school, and a K8, which also includes the acceleration and high school graduation rate and those types of things. The problem is with elementary schools, it's solely based on FSA. Those seven boxes, 700 points. And that's why if you look at, not only in Leon County, but throughout the state of Florida, most of these schools, most of these DA schools are elementary schools, because it's solely based on that one test. And I've talked to you before about adding, about lobbying the legislature and the governor to add an eighth box to reward schools for third grade promotion. We had a meeting with folks from the governor's office, and they were not very receptive to that, which I kind of figured was going to be their response, because, you know, they really don't want to see necessarily a lot of improvement or growth as, you know, their agenda continues to be pushed with vouchers and charters and other things. I'm disappointed in that, but, you know, we'll live to fight another day. I just wanted to interject those comments before she moves on about the components, and especially elementary school and the pressure it puts our elementary school principals under, because it's solely based on that test, and other, other things are not included in the total comprehension, comprehensive assessment of that school and its grade.
And another thing I believe that actually hurts high schools, one gets the other doesn't. So in middle school, if they're taking a lot of high school courses, when they go to high school, then the students who weren't eligible are the ones who are taking the Algebra One test, and so sometimes it looks like, what's wrong with these high schools? The kids aren't passing algebra, when in fact, those, the kids who have already passed are not reflected in the grade. Same with some of the other courses where they take EOC, so it's sort of, you know, robbing Peter to pay Paul in that respect. I don't think people understand that when they see the algebra scores.
Sure, yes.
Algebra scores are just the ones who weren't able to take the high school and middle school.
And so as an amalgamation of all of the work at all of our schools, our district earns a district grade. And so before you is the summary of the different components that is the district grade. English Language Arts, again, it's consistently the proficiency, the student achievement, which is Level Three and above, learning gains, and then as defined by the state, and then the bottom 25 percent learning gains for math as well, science, social studies at the high school level is, consists of US history, and so it's civics in middle school, US history in high school, the graduation rate data, which is lagged by a year, college and career acceleration data, and then middle school acceleration data. And so that is how our district grade is.
I just have a question, and perhaps I should, I can ask it offline. How do, how do learning gains inform us from one year to another at the local school itself?
So, the locals, it depends. That's, that's a clear answer. Each of the learning, each scale score level is divided into sublevels below the proficiency rate, so that's a lot of words. So if you're a Level One or Two student, that's below proficiency by the state. Level One is divided into three sublevels, low Level One, medium Level One, high Level One. Level Two is divided into low Level Two, high Level Two. In order for a student to be considered a learning gain, they have to move from one sublevel to another sublevel. Unless, of course, they are a high Level One, they must move to a Level Two, and a high Level Two must move to a Level Three. And so I smile because it's really kind of complicated, and it's really just about how the state defines learning gains on this assessment.
So with every school, with its own principal, who has their own method by which they choose to advance curriculum, learning plans, the utilization of staff compared to paraprofessionals, compared to full-time teachers, if you have learning gains, and then you also have different populations in different schools, does that, do the learning gains and the progress made there, does it somehow captured and communicated about what then becomes best practices for us as a district?
So I certainly hope so. We spend a lot of time working with our principals monthly at district meetings, our assistant principals of curriculum, and then through our curriculum developers on what is a learning gain, what does it look like, what you have to do to go from a low Level One to a medium to a high, to a low Two, to a high Two, to a Three, what that path looks like for students in terms of cognitive complexity, exposure to rich texts, understanding where they are, meeting them where they are, and moving them forward. Each school principal, and I stand before you confident of this, every school principal in our district knows who their Level Ones are, who their medium Level Ones, their high, they know who those students are, they are constantly monitoring and making sure that they are receiving the best instruction they possibly can, which often includes intervention. An intervention looks like small groups in ELA and in math at the elementary level. To your point, at some schools, the principals may select to hire a paraprofessional to deliver that small group under the leadership of a teacher in the classroom. Other principals may elect to hire additional instructional coaches to push in and do pull outs in the hallway, in the media center, in office space, to work with small groups of students. Oftentimes, some of the, the data that we, we have really rich data that can say to a teacher, I've just taught integers and/or algebraic thinking to my first grade class, and my students are struggling, based on some of the feedback that I'm getting, this is the standard they need extra help on, so that when I do my instruction, whole group, and then I pull into small group, I'm going to only pull the four or five students in who need help on this particular skill and remediate, and then move forward. And so that's really where we get traction with learning gains, is really being surgical, really being intentional, and really being deliberative in our practice for instruction with our students. And so all of our principals, without exception, are on that piece of it, absolutely.
And so over the last three years, I've learned a lot about elementary school. These elementary principals are off the chain with their data walls. They have every single child, student in their school, that's, they're color-coded, they know what level they are, they know how they're tracking, they know how many points they need to be counted as a gain. I mean, it is, it is something, you have to, you need to see it sometime, really. I would encourage you to go, and that's all elementary schools, even the...
Yes, non-title ones?
Non-title ones, I mean, these elementary principals, because it is 100, that grade is 100 percent driven by the test. So I encourage you to go look at some of these data walls. You know, go visit Anisha Robinson, or one of those principals, or any of the ones sitting there. I know Rhonda's shaking, what, kidding me? She's right here.
I mean, the data walls have pictures of the children. Yes.
I'm here, I'm here.
So, so that's really kind of pieces and the parts that come together to make the picture of school grades as it relates to the state accountability system. So where are we now? In 2019, we saw some shifts upward, which I'm pleased to say. We had many schools improve, and we had originally in 2018, six schools in the differentiated accountability process, and five of them exited. And so, yes, it is through the hard work, it's through those data walls, it's through the data walls. And so our principals have worked tirelessly with their leadership teams, our students, we, it has been truly a task, and they have worked the every piece of data, every piece of instruction, every minute of every day. There are schools that you can roll up to, and they have the attendance and tardy numbers for the day, and they get to the parents about tardiness, because the number of minutes missed in the morning translates to missed instruction, and the parents understand that's part of the school culture. And so where we are is we have 12 As, nine Bs, 15 Cs, and we have three schools in DA, and those schools we will be working very closely with, and that's in your packet as well, that plan. Our district percentage is 61 percent, and so we are a B school district. We are within reach of an A school district, and that, that is a goal that we are making. That was our goal for last year, it is our goal for this year. We are being intentional about our support, we're going after CTE points, we're going after acceleration, we're going after learning gains for our students, we're going after proficiency. We have it, just as schools have school improvement plans with targets around ELA math, we are in the process of fleshing out what would be appropriate targets, and we'll be pleased to bring those back to the board once we kind of land that plane. But we're looking at our data, and our goal is, is to stand before you, staff to stand before you next year, with an A in front of the 2020 year. And we're close. I think we're nine, nine points away, less than 1 percent away from that. So we're making strides.
Great.
And as I mentioned, we do have a tiered model of support. And so all of our schools, regardless of school grade, enter into this tiered model of support. And what that does is, it provides us, the district and the school, essentially an informal contract about what we're going to do to support the achievement of students on their campuses. And so for our schools that are in DA, they are our priority schools, they're blue, and so they get extra reading time, they get monthly data chats with district staff, they have first access to curriculum developers based on their identified needs. So if science is a need, for example, at a school that might be in DA, if science is a need, we have already, we have already connected our science experts with that school, so they begin during pre-planning to, to frame out a plan for success for the year in science. We do the same thing in ELA, we do the same thing in math. What we do, we spend a little, we spend quarter one really working with new teachers, and teachers new to Leon County, to make sure that they understand our core curriculum. Quarter two, we're really working with large groups and professional development. By quarter three, we are identifying students, and we as district staff are working with, at the student level, strengthening and supporting their achievement. And then, of course, in quarter four, we're revisiting the needs of our schools' communities as they enter into the summer preparation season, and making sure that they have all of their needs met. And so we do that in a stratified way, and that's reflected in this tiered model of support. So our most needy schools see us much more frequently than our less needy schools.
Quick question, Gillian. Under the priority for the schools of grade D in the state's lowest 300, you list that other supports TBD to be determined. How soon, and what might that look like, and what's the plan to?
So those supports really reflect what the principal requests. So for example, at one of our schools, in September, they asked for us to evaluate another curriculum source for intervention that they wanted to purchase, so we did, we provided them financial support, training support, substitute support, those kinds of things. So that's intentionally vague, because we did that for one, because that's what that one school needed. Another school asked for a teacher resource to come, beginning in September, and work with small groups of students who are, who are not responding to intervention, and were in need of additional intervention, something that was kind of off of our menu to see if we could do something different. So we did that. So the other supports really varies by school, and it is completely determined and driven by the principal, with support from us to kind of make sure that, you know, it's not completely out of the park. But we try to do innovative things with that, we try to do, and use all of our resources. For example, last year with Title IV, we had additional teacher resources who provided gifted instruction to our students at Title I schools, so that the teachers didn't feel pulled in so many directions, right, to reach the highest level students while at the same time being responsible for intervening and remediating those low students. So we did push-in with gifted, with some teacher resources through Title IV. We also did some push-in with intervention with Title IV teachers, who went into some of our neediest schools and did really small, like two to one, small group instruction. So it varies.
Visualize, yes, thanks.
So these are our tiered models of support. And also in your packet, I have for you, just because I know this is how we, is there our traditional blue and white sheets, which I know that I see some of you reviewing, that's for you, for your schools, and for those that you would like, and if you need it electronically, I'd be happy to provide that as well.
Thank you very much, and I just want to say again, as we said yesterday, we're so proud of your team and the leadership you've provided, and the principals out there who've provided, and the teachers. I mean, this takes a village to do what you've accomplished and what we continue to accomplish. So thank you so much.
Thank you. My team appreciates that. Thank you.
Okay. Shall we move on?
Yes.
All right. We have, we're going to hear a presentation, I believe now, on the Leon County Schools' mental health plan that everybody heard today, right, at the all-day principal workshop?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, I'm Tanya Kuchdero, and I am here to provide you an overview on our mental health plan for the, for the 2019-20 school year.
Okay.
Do we have? I don't know. Is there a handout here for that, or we're going to do the, no?
I can get you all across.
Okay, I guess not.
She's going to do a PowerPoint.
Going to do a PowerPoint, thank you.
Okay, so first of all, I just wanted to give you some background, some data on the mental, on the reason why the importance of our mental health plan. So about 20 percent of the students now suffer from some type of severe mental illness. And so what our plan, our plan is put in place so that we can early identify. Most of our funds that we get, we put into our Tier One strategies, and I'm going to go through and show you a bit of some of those strategies that we are implementing inside the schools. Okay, mental health illness, they affect the learning and achievement, which we're here to make sure students are successful. Friendships and behavior, school completion, those graduation rates. So those students that we, that fall through the cracks and we don't identify early, and that don't receive the services they require, they're, you know, they are at risk of not graduating from high school or going on to...
I apologize. I'm curious to know what is defined as the 20 percent who have severe mental, what do we characterize as severe mental illness?
So, I'm not a mental health professional, but things like depression, anxiety, eating disorders, substance abuse, substance use disorders, those students that, you know, we don't identify with those areas.
Okay.
You have kids sitting in classes that, or, you know, they have, they suffer from anxiety, we may not never know. So those are, those are the kids that we're trying to identify.
I thought you may have been talking about paranoid schizophrenia and things like that, and I was...
We have students, yes. Those are mental illness. So paranoid schizophrenia.
Bipolar.
Bipolar.
ADHD.
So, yes, those...
Is that a national number? That's not a local number, is it?
So this information comes from the National Alliance on Mental Illness.
Oh, there wasn't 20 percent in Leon County schools.
Thank goodness, I was about to have a stroke. I'm sorry, 20 percent in our school.
In the first, in the first slide, you had the 20 percent up there. I didn't know if that was...
Ours.
...in Leon County schools.
So, those are statistics. So we have about 37,000 students...
I'm really concerned about, you know, 20% of our students suffer from severe mental illness. That just sounds to me to lump anxiety and depression, maybe even mild depression, in with.
Because that's what I.
Me too. I never heard anything you said.
She says a mental health condition.
Mental health condition. So, but they're, they're, the levels, they suffer at different levels. So, so we're say 20% of students suffer from mental health conditions.
Okay. Mental health conditions I can live with. Severe mental, whatever. I just don't want, I can just hear the phones ringing now.
Well, yeah, we want the facts though.
So this is, like I said, this is, this is national data.
Okay.
This is national data.
Everybody else and us, so know that. I'm just saying, calm down, don't pass up yet.
Okay. So our mental health plan, our components, we, it centers around early identification. Like I say, most of our dollars go into early interventions. Assessment, diagnosis, interventional treatment and recovery. That's what we're, we're, we're trying to provide to the students. We use the, we're continuing the universal screeners that, we've been doing this now probably, I think, eight years, doing those universal screeners where we look at the internalizing, externalizing behaviors of students. And it's just to, to say, this student may need some additional support. Okay. We have DisVillage in the, in the schools and they provide the mental health and wellness specialists, their community, and we refer to community-based providers. The coordination of services, we use that release of information form. So if a student is, is requiring services that we do not have the capacity to provide at the school level, we will ask that the parent sign a release of information so that we can work with those agencies to provide support plans for the students in the school. So again, $922,000 approximately this year, over $500,000 goes to DisVillage. We, they provide us with 24 health and wellness specialists. We pay for the, the 10 that services the elementary schools and our charter schools. The other 14, they, they provide to us in a partnership and they've been doing this for years. We're hiring three additional social workers and we're doing referrals to outside agencies.
So given the ratio and the numbers of students that we have, what do we have, like 33,000 students thereabout?
Well, if we can, we, so charter schools signed on with us, so we're including all those students in the charter schools and the alternative schools. And so, the last number I got was around 37,000.
Okay. So what does that mean? One counselor for every 500 students? Every, what's the, 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 the count there? I mean, how widespread are these students really receiving what they need?
Okay. So we, those are the counselors that we contracted with outside. But we also use our guidance counselors that are at schools. We have behavior specialists that are at the schools. We have psychologists and we have social workers that we're, that are employed by Leon County Schools. So it's just not, not a total of three social workers, we have additional social workers.
That's right. Of course, I know that. Okay. Thank you.
May I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
You said we're contracting with some of the private mental health providers. If a student needs, you know, that is recommended at the school, the student needs to go into more intense therapy, do we know how funds to pay for that or is it still up to the parents to figure that out?
So we do not pay for individual services, mental health services. So if they're provided outside the school, if they're inside the school, we're using our own people, then, but outside of the school, we do not pay for services.
Okay. So I just.
It's not really a con, it's not really a contract. It's just a memorandum of understanding with that, with Appalachian Mental Health, CCYS and those. We aren't paying them any money. We're referring potential clients to them and it's just an agreement we have with those different agencies.
Then they would then bill their insurance or Medicaid or?
Yes. Personal insurance or Medicaid.
Yep.
So one, I'm sorry. Would behavior modification be found in your grid of, of, of needs for our students?
So yes, some, some, we, we have teams, the problem solving teams and the behavior specialists, they will come together if behavior modification is, is a strategy that they're using, they'll put a behavior plan together for the students and monitor them.
Okay.
Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, I, I think so. I guess I'm, I'm trying to see to the extent that, I need to ask this very carefully. Where there is disruptive behaviors in our schools, the question is not how is that dealt with, but it might be the question. But to the extent that it is disruptive enough that some of our students need to have the kind of counseling referrals or psychological interventions.
So those referrals start with us. We have, we have a MTSS, a problem solving team at every school. And so those referrals come from parents, they come from teachers, they, they, you know, they look at grades, attendance, behavior. Those things may generate a referral and they go through those processes, the, the multi-tiered systems of supports. They, they, if they're not responding to tier one, which is core, then they move to those, in those targeted tier-two interventions. So we work through that process and if they're not responding, eventually they will get to a point where we would have to refer them out for, for more professional mental health services.
So have there been instances or instances where behavior modification is needed such that a child might be suspended or expelled? Is that part of the prescription that is applied in this?
All right. You said, is, I don't understand the question.
Okay. We have a good number of suspensions and expulsions, high number, I think. And I'm trying to see if the behavior modification in any way fits with that in the deterrence of those suspensions and expulsions.
So it depend, when you say suspension and expulsion, it depends on the behavior.
Yes.
And whether it's a one-time offense or maybe, or whether it's ongoing. Those students that have those chronic behavior issues, those, those are the students that we try to refer to the MTSS process. So.
Okay. All right. We're getting there.
So there, yes. We, we've had this process in place for, for a while at every school.
If I may further inquire, I, one of the things that, as we talked, I think they work in tandem. And that is perhaps behavior modification and mental health working in tandem, particularly for our most early learners who would benefit from that type of diagnoses and that type of influence early on in terms of how to deal with rage, how to deal with anger, how to deal with, with sadness and depression that may come from issues that are beyond the control of these children and they subsequently come to our schools and act out. And I guess that's what, and so, as, because one of the things that we've been talking about as a board has been what we see as a gross disparity between, and discipline for, in my, for minority populations, right? Because the numbers have shown us that, but then I think that there are preventive, and I'm no expert, you're the subject matter expert and others who work with you. I guess what we'd like to know is what is our plan of action to mitigate that type of deviant, not deviant, but that disruptive behavior early on such that these young people can perhaps have the type of coping mechanisms and skills early on.
Totally.
Right? To mitigate what we, what is our superintendent has even described as children being angry because of their circumstances beyond their control.
Okay. So at the, at the basic level, positive behavior intervention systems in support. So we're, PBIS, we're recommitting to that. And so that is a, that is a way to.
What's PBIS? I'm sorry. I don't mean to be rude.
Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports.
Okay.
And so that is a way to teach appropriate behavior and reward for appropriate behavior versus punishing for bad behavior. So we're, we're reigniting that in, in all of our schools. ESC department is taking it over. The behavior specialists are going to work with the schools directly. Every school has a behavior specialist to implement that program.
That's great.
That's great news. Thank you.
Something I, oh, I'm sorry. Just I think we're sort of asking for, maybe the superintendent, you can provide us, we'd like to just hear, see what the ratios are. How many social workers? How many counselors? Just to get a, a better feel for what the personnel issues are. I mean, not the issues, but what the, how we're staffed.
Composition.
Composition.
And I, and I think we have 10 social workers.
I can tell you, we have 59 guidance counselors. This is from my last count. We have 59 guidance counselors. We have 17 school psychologists. We have 10 social workers. Am I missing, am I missing anybody? I think that's it.
And then we have the 24 with DisVillage.
We have the 24 with DisVillage.
If you want to add all those people up and then, you know.
Yep. That was my earlier.
Divide by.
Need.
That number into 37,000, that would give you a, a ratio. I mean, it's a high number. I mean, you alluded to.
Yeah, I know.
It's a high number, but to add, just when it comes back to priorities and, and money is, to add another, if you add a counselor, one counselor at 40 sites at $60,000 with benefits and everything, on average, that's $2.4 million, just for one at every site. I mean, so, yeah, we'd love, we'd love to have more. We are, we're obviously, we're definitely doing more than we have been in years past. We added three social workers. In addition, we're spending half a million dollars north to center $600,000 with DisVillage. We're very grateful of what they have done with our secondary schools for, but that, that's 10 people. That's 10 FTEs for over half a million dollars. Yeah, that's 10 people are between $500,000 and $600,000.
So is the thought, I'm sorry, I'm going to talk.
Go ahead.
Is the thought then to place the counselors, the psychologists and the others at the schools and the areas where there's the greatest need?
They, well, they rotate. They all have mul, they serve multiple sites. So we don't have, we don't have enough money to have one at every single school.
I understand.
And of course, depending on their staffing, the, they visit the schools that, that have the most need more often than the schools that, that don't. Just depends on the, the number of students, right? But they, you know, with 10 social workers and 38 sites, you know, it's, it's a, it's a tough lift, but we're, we could always hire more, but it's, it's just, it's money.
So they're, they're one to two days. So every school has a counselor there, a wellness counselor from DisVillage, one to do two days, depending on the need. So, and we're going to look at that again because some schools had higher numbers than other.
Heritage Trail probably has, has a constant presence, right?
So Heritage Trails is a little different, the, although, and I think the Promises Program that Dr. Rogers talked about today, the administrative training plays into this. So it may be good for you to hear from them, the program we're going to start at Heritage Trails. But traditionally Heritage Trails has been for kids who have been diagnosed with emotional behavior disorder, that those kids were sent to that site to work with them in a, in a, in a smaller setting and then to try to re-acclimate them to the mainstream, to mainstream schools and to work on those behaviors. But those are traditionally had just been the kids in our school district that have been diagnosed with emotional behavior disorder, although we know we have others. But this Promises Program that Dr. Rogers is talking about with our administrators today, I think you were there for that conversation, is going to take a deeper dive into some of these students at a much younger age and look at these behaviors to try to intervene sooner before they get, they're too far gone. So that's what that program is, is set up to do. And she can provide more information on, on that piece of it.
That's only at Heritage Trail?
No, it's going to be, so Heritage Trail is going to serve as the host because we have capacity there, you know, that, at former adult community. We have capacity at Heritage Trails to, to run this program simultaneously along with what they're doing with the kids in emotional behavior support. I think we have about 70 in that program. We're also adding some, some younger students there as well as the Promises Program that can kind of do an evaluation. If there, if there is an emotional behavior issue, then we need to address it and get it in help and need. If it's an issue of just BAD, then we need to look at, at, at methods to address that too.
Ma'am. I think what my two colleagues were getting at is, and something that I wanted to add to what you're saying is, we've, all of us, I'm sure everybody finds it very disheartening when an elementary school-aged child is expelled for self-medicating with pot or alcohol, only to find out that their family situation is completely unlivable and nobody from the school ever called to find out what was going on. And they just, it was a second offense, so they were just going to expel the kid, in this case that I happen to be familiar with. And, and to me, self-medicating in the third or fourth grade because of, is, is an indication of a depression or something's bad, something's wrong. And, and I certainly would hope that we could get to a place where, when that kind of thing is happening at such a young age, especially that, that maybe, you know, an earlier intervention that could have maybe saved this kid or these children.
You know, I, I'm wondering.
I think we ought to let Dr. Rogers talk about the Promises Program.
All right.
I was going to, yes, Dr. Rogers.
Okay. That'd be great.
Can I ask a quick question while she's walking up?
Yes.
Are we differentiating between guidance counselors who do academic advising?
I hope so.
And mental health counselors who do counseling and, and?
Well, yeah.
So we have 59 academic school counselors. Okay. But those school counselors serve as referral coordinators, they sit on the problem solving team, they, I mean, they, they wear multiple hats.
Right. Okay.
Hmm. Okay. So, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The, the program that you've been hearing about is something that we're implementing and just new this year. Shared it with our administrators, Promises. It stands for Providing Mentorship, Inspiration, Support and Engagement to Students. And basically, what we're going to do is for those JAMs who stand out, as you all have described today, this is an intervention. This is when this multi-tiered system of support, we've exhausted all those things at the school level and we still find that this JAM needs some help. Outside of calling the parent, outside of suspension, all of those things, we then take a look at this JAM and we alternatively place them with the parent's permission to take a deeper dive, a, a better look at these students to see what type of services we can provide to this kid. It is not a recommendation for suspension or expulsion, rather. It is basically altern, alternatively placing the student so that we can look at the whole child and see what is it that we can do to help them. It also goes back to that why. Why is that student self-medicating, as you said? Why is that student disrupting the classroom? Asking the why and the what and see how we can provide, close that gap for that kid, giving them some support.
So will that ideally happen before a recommendation for expulsion and a hearing takes place?
Way before.
Thank you.
Okay. Way before. Because this is what we've been looking at over the years. This is a, a pattern that we've seen. The multi-tiered system of support really has not been implemented with the intention for which it was developed. So now it, it, we bring the owners back with the administrators, with the school, to utilize, implement that program and exhaust everything at that particular school. When that doesn't work, then it allows the student to be alternatively placed.
Great.
Now, there is limits to that in terms of the numbers. So we are going to have the district take a look at it. First, there's a small district committee made up of Dr. Cox, Sue Crawford, myself. We're going to look at it and then we're going to give them that go-ahead to place that student at Heritage Trail.
Dr. Rogers, I'm sorry, this sounds very promising and I look forward to seeing, you know, what we shall yet become. It sounds almost hopeful. Back in the day, we in some districts used to do home visits. That was a long time ago. Do we do any kinds of home visits for any reasons anymore?
Yes, we do.
you know, what we shall yet become. It sounds almost hopeful. Back in the day, we in some districts used to do home visits. That was a long time ago. Do we do any kinds of home visits for any reasons anymore?
Yes, we do. And also, with respect to that package that comes to the district-level committee, we're asking that those things are in place, like a social worker, visit to the home, so that we could find out if there are additional things that are going on that we may not know about. So, we're asking for that documentation as well. So, we're really putting the onus on the school. We got social workers and others involved to give us as much information as possible so that we can help the student that we, that is in front of us.
Okay. When I hear the number, one, one quick thing. The fifty-nine academic counselors that we have, well, if that's what we have, that's what we have. But my outlook about where we are going as we look at safety for an entire district and even related to the hardening, and I know dollars are dollars and they are scant, but I do hope that we can take a look at some point in the future. And I think I remember reading something in the paper that somewhere in high government offices, someone is taking a look at counselors and, and dollars eventually to come, Mr. Superintendent. But this fifty-nine academic counselors who assist with completing paperwork for, for college and that kind of thing, that's good. But to find additional resources and to continue to broaden this program so we can catch these children that fall under the need of the mental health plan component certainly remains a, a, a very high priority of this board member. And, you know, I've been talking about that for years. So, as we talk about this and as we continue to look to see how we can, can meet the needs of, of the students, I'm, I'm anxious, very anxious.
I would just, real quick before Mr. Jones, and I would just ask, when you have, as you have priorities, like we discussed yesterday, do you have a, a solution or a thought? And we put a, put a price tag on it, so you can say, how much would this X cost? How much, you know, if we wanted to do this? And then we could come back with a number and you could say, okay, well, this is what we're up against, you know, financially. And then where does it fall in as, you know, priority-wise with the resources that we have available? That would really be helpful for, for me and for, for Naomi and for, for Kim to say, because instead of just a theoretical, we'd love to do more in this area. Well, what does that look like to you?
Okay. I got it.
I'm just delighted to hear about such innovation from both you and Ms.
Fitzgerald.
Fitzgerald. Fitzgerald. Because as we talk about these issues, and I can dare say we've talked about them a great deal, it's this type of innovation, and particularly what we will see a year from now in terms of the metrics and the impacts that this will have on, on, on school, on student achievement, that child, once they've come through this program, when we see them some three and four years later, we've seen the type of academic and social maturation that then will now take this child, who would have been a statistic, most readily talked about by sociologists, is now a success story. And it will have been because of the innovation found in our school district. And so, I'm delighted to hear about this. I'm delighted to find out about the updates about what the impacts will be on this mental health plan, how we're arming and equipping educators who've always, it's always been about local parentis, right? That the, the teacher has been more than just the teacher, but the parent away from home and who are our first mental health counselors, but our moms and our dads, right? And so, here we now are equipping our teachers and other members of the, of the, of the, of the academic family to be able to meet the needs of the ones who are most, who could easily be discounted, disregarded, written off, and yet we have a, we're using innovative protocols to save them. And that's exciting to hear. And I, and those go, and I go back to Ms. Wood and about marketing, those are the types of stories that we tell when people talk about charter schools and these other carpetbaggers who would come to our community and take away our important taxpayer dollars. It is this type of innovation that we need to support and equip our teachers who are already readily concerned so that they can help to save our children. I, I just delighted to hear about this. This is great conversation to me.
It sounds like leave no child behind.
Leaving no child, none of them, not now one.
Embracing every one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. This is great news.
It is, it is. I look forward to it.
I'll have one more slide in there.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. We've just hijacked you, huh?
It's hard to get through a presentation with this board.
With this group.
Okay, so, our plan initiatives this year, and the initiali, internalizing, externalizing, universal screeners, Sanford Harmony, we're going to continue that. We, we started, we implemented that last year in K-5, and we're going to continue that, continue to implement that. We, we, we were late getting started because some of the kids didn't arrive to schools as, as we thought they would, but everyone has kits now, and I will facilitate ordering additional ones if they need them. We talked about positive behavior intervention systems, Safe and Drug-Free School Champions. So, those, those champions will receive training in Too Good for Drugs and Violence and go back to the schools to implement, to help implement that. We did Jason Foundation last year, and I had some numbers here. I think over eight hundred classes were completed online. So, that's, that's a suicide prevention program. So, the educate, the teachers at the school, they are getting information. They're becoming familiar with the signs and symptoms that they look, need to look for. So, that's going to help catch those students. Youth Mental Health First Aid, we conducted twelve classes last year, which was a great start, given that we only started with two instructors. So, we did twelve classes last year. We have sixteen scheduled for this upcoming year, and that's just September through April. And we'll pick up again in the summer. So, any questions?
No.
Four questions?
Ms. Rasmussen.
The, the new legislation that requires the five hours?
Yes. We're going to convene a committee of, so it's five hours of training for sixth, twelfth, sixth, twelfth grade. So, we're going to convene, convene a committee of middle school and high school principals to figure out how we're going to do that. I've already scheduled a meeting with local provider who has a, a program that I can look at to see if it's going to fulfill the, the needs that we, we need. And so, the curriculum, if the curriculum is there, then, you know, we don't have to reinvent the wheel.
If I might follow, just two other things which are sort of related. One is, I understand from, is it the Oasis Center for Girls, that they are possibly interested or already perhaps doing girl talk circles, like they're coming into the schools for young women to process? And, and I don't know if there would be a similar program for young men that might be, but maybe those are the kind of community resources we could tap into that would help just, you know, sometimes, I know all three of my children are verbal processors, so.
So, those, and I'll go ahead to that slide. I wasn't going, I was going to stop, but those are the requirements, awareness and signs and symptoms, the process for getting and seeking, getting help for themselves or others, awareness of resources, and what to say to peers. So, those are the requirements of the five hours of instruction as it stands now. So, that, that is what we're going, and that's read out of statute, so.
The, the last D, I just have, I don't know if AHEC, the Area Health Education something.
Counselor.
Maybe, yeah. My daughter is interning with AHEC out in a different state this summer, and she just was trained, and she's a certified something that speaks to letter D. We'll see. But I'm just trying to think of other resources that already exist that maybe we hadn't thought about yet. The other thing I wanted to mention, which this is after all the time I've been on the board, this is the first time this has ever happened.
What?
I got a phone call the other day from a guy I used to work with in the legislature, and he is very passionate about education. And he was so moved by this, this powerful video that has to do with substance abuse by a professional basketball player who, and he said, in watching the audience of diverse students responding to this powerful video or movie, I don't remember, we're so moved. And I don't know what the data is, but he offered to either pay for it or raise the money to help us pay for it.
Us?
So, I sent it to Dr. Cox to check out the link to make sure it's something that we think is appropriate, but it sounded, he was, he was so incredibly persuasive on the phone, I think we absolutely ought to consider taking him up on his offer.
Okay.
Well, yeah.
Well, since we're all talking about this subject, I'm just going to interject a congratulatory remark really about today's conference.
Yes.
With the principals. Ms. Bone and I were there in the early part, and I saw Mr. Jones. And the speaker that you had.
Samir.
I'm going to say his name, right? Samir Hinduja was, I thought, you know, we've been talking about school grades and points and data points and all this. The thing that I was so happy to hear and that the principals got to hear for a good hour and a half was, one thing we can control is the school climate. And there were so many great tips and ideas of how you include the students.
Yes.
And the teachers in on this process so that people really want to be at that school and that there are relationships built so that if something is going on, that they, they have someone safe they can tell. And basically, you know, creating empathy, all kinds of ways for other students to, to create empathy. And he talked a lot about cyberbullying and all the things that kids have to put up with now when they go home from school. The superintendent spoke about that, too, very poignantly, I thought, that's not just in school, but it's outside of school and how, what a great effect this has on children when they get bullied or talked about online. So, I really thought that was a great way for you all to kick off the school year, not talking about school grades while they're important. This really is important.
It is important.
And I hope as a board, we can come up with a way, with the superintendent's help, to really start recognizing schools that have positive school climates. I think we, as a board, have to say, we value this. We don't just value your school grade, we value your school climate grade. And since we're doing school climate surveys, I would like to start with, I don't know who was the winner last year, who had the best results on their school climate, but I'd like to recognize them at a board meeting and start doing that to show our value, that we care about how teachers, how parents, how students feel about the climate they're in. Because, you know, whatever we measure shows that we care, right? So, I think we should measure that.
Great idea.
So, I hope that we can.
Great idea.
Follow up on that idea, and I would like us to present some sort of award to some of the schools who really.
Well, District Three will get all of them, because all of our schools have wonderful climate.
Well, let's, let's figure out a way to, to do it that makes it a big deal.
Every last one of them.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I just say also, as I add my voice to yours, that the summit this morning was absolutely outstanding. I found it wonderfully educational and positive. Actually, I thought I would hear more about school grades. I'm glad I didn't because we've heard that a lot. But to hear the presenter share the information and just to see and feel the synergy there in that room, I was just absolutely not surprisingly amazed, but felt really, really good to be with the, the core leaders and shakers and doers, Mr. Superintendent. So, Mr. Cox is to be commended, and, and we hope that he will continue to feel good or better. We understand that he's a little ill now, but it was really wonderful. Don't know if I'll be there tomorrow, but there are some wonderful topics for tomorrow. We will just see, but it was great. Lunch wasn't bad either.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Oh, next we have something I'm really excited about, too. We're going to have a presentation on Purpose Built Communities, our South City Foundation. We are going to be working on, we're going to be hopefully passing an MOU tonight, but they're here to tell us what this is all about. So, if our presenters would please come on up, and I'll have you introduce yourselves and tell us what role you play in this process. And up on the screen is a shot of what the South City Foundation is about, and so the board members, you have a handout on that as well.
Yes, we do.
So, Dr. Iris Wilson is here, longtime principal, assistant superintendent, all kinds of roles. She was my boss at one point. She was my colleague at one point. So, I am just so happy to have you here.
Good person.
Serving in this new capacity. So, if you could just tell us about what we're looking at tonight and why we're looking at it.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent and Board Chair, Board Members. First of all, before I get started, I wanted to say congratulations to Dr. Flanagan and her staff for improving their school grades, since Hartsfield is part of this. I serve on the board of the South City Foundation, and I'm also the Chair of the Educational Committee.
Put your mic up just a little bit. There we go.
I serve on the board of South City Foundation, and I'm also the Chair of the Education Committee. South City Foundation is excited about the upcoming approval of the Memorandum of Understanding, which outlines the academic support of Hartsfield Elementary School, which is its own school for South City. This MOU will support one of the three pillars of the Purpose Built Communities, which is the educational pipeline, which is Cradle to College, collaboration with Leon County Schools with the Purpose Built Communities, leadership at Hartsfield, and the South City Foundation. And our goal is to be able to provide that additional support to the school so that it will also impact with the revitalization of the neighborhood. That support will be done with a needs assessment from the school, which will be with the leadership and with the South City Foundation. Pool communities from the city, as well as county partnerships and future opportunities will be our early childhood program that we will be looking at, as well as the IB feeder support schools, Fairview and Rickards. Right now, there's a total of funding through these pooled partnerships of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for 2019, and we look for that to be increased, which will be for supporting Hartsfield. We know that residents' involvement is a key priority, and we have Mrs. Henry who's going to talk a little bit about that, because I know, they want to know, how are the residents involved? That this is not something that we are doing to the neighborhood and residents, but that they are involved and it's for them. As a public school, all district and state guidelines and policies will be followed. We're not trying to change our public school. Quarterly reports will be provided to this board with updates on where we are and how we're doing. So, at that point, this point, I'd like to have Dr. Flanagan to tell us a little bit about the programs we'll be supporting, and then Mrs. Henry.
Good evening, Board Members.
Good evening.
I stand here as the proud principal of Hartsfield Elementary School, and I'm really excited about the collaborative that, and to be able to enter. We're a school that's chosen because of the Cradle to College pipeline that they want to create within this, this revitalization of the South City Foundation and, and the community. And so, Hartsfield, we sit at a prime place to be a partner in this. We have a strong academic trajectory as well as our social, social, emotional learning component. They talked earlier about mental health, and that is at the top of our agenda. We are a trauma-informed school, and we are also a conscious discipline school. And those are two very pivotal staples in our curriculum. So, not only are we, we moving students forward academically, but also we're building stronger individuals. In addition to that, with our academic trajectory, Rickards is the IB school, Fairview has an IB component, and so the primary years program is the baby IB. And that's where we're headed as well in terms of our academic trajectory. And that just creates a more global-minded individual, someone that can think critically, a, a, a world enquirer. And so, we are on that trajectory. It is a, it's a strong front, and we're, we're excited about the collaborative with South City Foundation so that they can help us to bridge that gap. These are, these are investments, and investments take resources. And bringing our communities together to be able to believe in our schools, to build better products, and to ensure that these investments are implemented, that is what we need. And so, we are very, very excited in putting the, working together to bring the MOU to the state that it is today. We steered clear of charter language. We steered clear of turnaround. Hartsfield is not a turnaround school. We have students that come from an area of blight that deserves revitalization, but we have a very, very strong trajectory, and we have a very- we have a very, very strong trajectory and we have a very strong identity, and we feel that this program will help us get to where we're going.
Dr. Flanagan, may I ask you very quickly for the listening audience, would you speak just a little bit about what you mean and how defined is the trauma-informed school?
So in terms of the trauma-informed, all of us are exposed to adverse child experience, and those are, those are called ACES. And a lot of times, our students come from environments where they've experienced negative, negative occurrences and trauma. And trauma impacts how the brain learns, and it interferes when they bring that baggage to school. So with us being a trauma-informed care school, we put interventions in place that help to mitigate the impact of trauma. And not only that, but we also, we have a big, big effort to engage our parents and bring our parents on board so that it's not just trauma-informed during the day and conscious discipline during the day, but it's also at home. And so we're trying to ensure that our parents are part of this as well.
Right. Madam Chair. And a lot of that is about the adult response, isn't it?
The conscious discipline is about the adult response, right? And so we believe that in order to teach kids to be regulated, you need regulated adults in front of children.
Absolutely.
And so that's one of the, that's one of the staples in conscious discipline that, you know, we, we are regulated so that we can teach kids how to be regulated. And when they're in fear, or they don't feel that they're safe, then they're operating from the base of their brain.
Absolutely.
Instead of their executive part of the brain. And that parallels to our IB, our IB interest and the thrust and the curriculum forward. So we really do have a strong identity, and we feel that this partnership will, will definitely help us to get there.
Dr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Just a minute. So since this all came up, we're just doing a lot of research about purpose-built communities and writing articles, and it's, it's really fascinating, the, the way that they've moved and changed graduation rates, and, and I'm a big fan and very excited about this project. My concern, when looking at the MOU, and you referenced charter schools, we wanna, we want to keep this concept within our traditional public school, and specifically Hartsfield. This is a great, I think we're, you know, we're all on the same page with that. Historically, with some of the purpose-built communities, we haven't seen that. We've seen it move into charter school territory. So I think we're, we're all in agreement. My concern is the language in the MOU. The only time it references Hartsfield is in the first paragraph, and it refers not to Hartsfield specific, it refers to high-quality cradle-to-college neighborhood pipeline focused on children of the South City neighborhoods in the Hartsfield Elementary Attendance Zone. So it doesn't say it's a partnership with Hartsfield, it says it's a partnership with the kids who live in your zone. And then from then on, it refers only to the entity as school. So what, was there a reason why it didn't specify Hartsfield? This is, this is a partnership with Hartsfield?
Can the attorney?
I think I can answer. The partnership is actually between Leon County Schools and South City Foundation. It's targeting that community, and the school that serves that community is Hartsfield. So that's why it refers to the Hartsfield Attendance Zone as the school. They didn't want to, well, I, I can't speak for the other partners or the other players that, that were involved in the MOU, but one thought that I have is to refer just to the school, they're focusing on that subset of the entire Hartsfield Attendance Zone. Because Hartsfield extends beyond that small community, the community that's targeted. But the purpose of this MOU is for that targeted section of the entire attendance zone that's Hartsfield. And so that's defined as the school, so that we understand there's the connection between the school, but it's really that piece of the broader attendance zone for that school.
Well, we know that the purpose-built model has a variety of legs to the stool. Among them are schools, affordable housing, municipal partnership.
Community wellness.
Community wellness. I guess, and I can't speak for my colleague, my concern is that I want to make certain that it is strongly evidenced in the language that the partner will remain Hartsfield Elementary School, because the purpose-built model calls for charter schools, and I'm not voting for charter schools. I'm only voting for our participation, and so I don't want there to be, I think there should be no ambiguity in who is the, the fourth leg or in this, on this stool.
There's no ambiguity. If you read the MOU, it's, it's clear that it's Hartsfield. And when we first met, this was about two years ago, Superintendent and I and some other people met, and we were very clear, if you want to do this with a charter school, we're not interested.
Right, okay.
We're only interested if you're talking to Leon County Public Schools, and they were right on board with that. They have lots of partnerships with public schools in Atlanta and otherwise. Now, the one that everybody talks about that they've gone to see is a charter school. They started from scratch, but we are so fortunate that we had a school in the attendance zone of South City that is so innovative already. They were like, oh, yes. In fact, they have a purpose-built school model that they sent us, and we said, no, thank you, we have our own model that we're already working on. And when we described what we were doing, what Dr. Flanagan is leading the charge on conscious discipline and trauma-informed.
Which is exciting.
And, and then now this, the district really, with or without purpose-built, we're going forward in the seeking the IB candidacy. So if that all falls apart, we're, we're, we are still moving forward. This is just telling them, we're committed to this so that this community quarterback club can see that we're part of the stool and want the three legs of the stool. People don't know what that means, but it, in the handout, if you see it's up on the Board, it's mixed-income housing, cradle-to-college education, and community wellness. And they have found if you put all three of those things together, that's when you get results.
I feel assured.
Okay, good.
I, I do not. I mean, I, and I'm not gonna stop this train because it's been long and, and it's going, but it would, to me, the language is very ambiguous. The only time Hartsfield is referenced, I mean, I think it's one more time that at least there's a, there's a piece of language that says Leon County Schools will, will fund at Hartsfield, but it refers to, it's, it's very ambiguous. But it would have been my preference that instead of saying "school," it would have said "Hartsfield Elementary." I mean, it says "school" generically throughout the document 20, 30, 40 times. Is there a reason why it couldn't have said "Hartsfield"?
I explained the reason why the term "school" was used to define that narrow attendance zone. If there's unreadiness by the Board, then what we can certainly do is add in a sentence that says, "This MOU is designed to benefit, to provide funding to Hartsfield Elementary School for the benefit of that specific attendance zone at Hartsfield." If that will make, provide some readiness to the Board, we are happy to pull this and bring it back to the next Board agenda. The, the only other thing I would mention is, I, I, I can, I hear the concern about vagueness maybe in that sentence, but there is not any other indication in this MOU anywhere that talks about the formation or application for any kind of charter. What it's designed to do is create that three-person committee to talk about best practices for the school, and it's designed to give, charge task at South City with fundraising for the benefit of the, the, the program. So, but again, to the extent the Board has some unreadiness, we can certainly pull it back, add in some additional language to make it abundantly clear so that that unreadiness is gone, and then we can bring it back.
Madam Chair, following the final presentation of your final presenter on the subject, I'd be prepared to make a motion.
Okay, thank you. And I just have to say, having worked on this and worked on the MOU, I understood "school" to reference Hartsfield every single time, but it just wasn't repeated. But there's no ambiguity with the South City, there's no ambiguity with purpose-built, and there's no ambiguity with the Superintendent of the Board. So when we redo the MOU next year, because every year it comes up for adoption, we could certainly change that language, but I would hate to pull it tonight over that.
I agree. I don't, I don't want to pull it. I just want you to know that I have some unease with that. It's, it's leaving the door open, the language, the way, the way I read it.
Well, we can, we could fix that next year.
Plus, next year, that'd be awesome.
Let's not, let's not stall the train here.
Wanted to bring Kristy Henry also forward.
Yes. Please introduce.
Hey, y'all, I'm Kristy Henry. I am a resident of South Side. I have a home in South City. I also have been in real estate for 16 years, specifically working in advocacy on the neighborhood level within the South Side community. What I bring to this project is a knowledge, not just of the community itself in regards to the impact that this collaborative and collective impact approach to catalytic change will bring, but also the understanding that we're not talking about just breaking systems of poverty, we're talking about creating systems of wealth. Because if we just focus on breaking systems of poverty, then we're just putting a Band-Aid on the overall problem. So when we approach this on a resident-driven pursuit of creating assets and aligning assets to create community wealth, then we'll bring sustainable change that will take root and that will replicate itself over and over again. Purpose-built has done this in communities all over, and it's created a problem for itself, right? Because the implements that they have make the other stuff around it unaffordable, because the assets increase as the infrastructure is placed. Hartsfield is an asset. It's not a turnaround school, it's an asset to a turnaround community. And that is how we look at this potential process, as making sure that we turn this community around by aligning assets that we have, and making sure that the pipeline of opportunity and access for the 2,900 residents that live there are clearly delineated and distributed to those citizens. So that's where our community engagement framework springs from. It's entirely grassroots, it's entirely neighborhood-driven and citizen-empowering, and we will have this whole nuance of direction come from the residents of that community, not just the ones in the housing projects, but the ones that live in the homes that line Country Club in Texas and Putnam, and create for the community a vision of what South City is and what South City has the potential to become. We want it to be a community of choice, just like we want Hartsfield to be a school of choice, and we intend for all of those assets to grow based upon the implements that we put. And we have a full-scale community engagement plan that we will be implementing once our Executive Director takes place, and we are ready to roll and ready to make that community everything, everything that it could be, and to have those implements replicate itself throughout the entire, entire South Side community.
Madam Chair.
Wow.
Wow. Martin Luther King said, and I shall paraphrase, Ms. Kristy, "Those individuals who feel that they have no part in society and are left out will want to tear it down. Those who are invited in to help build it will want to build it up." And I think, I know I'm hearing that you all have gone out and you have gotten the buy-in from the citizens of the South City side for this particular project. I am encouraged by it, it is positive, and again, I say, I look to see what we shall yet become in the County of Leon. You go, girls, I can say that and you won't get upset, won't you?
Well, what I think is so important about this discussion, although Hartsfield is District 3 adjacent.
Oh, wow. Oh, wow. Oh, wow.
This will, this, this, this whole, this innovation will stem the tide of what we know as cyclical poverty and economic segregation found in South Side Tallahassee, right?
That's right.
And we, and we realize that it starts early on, right? And the important part of ending economic segregation is, is our public schools. And so the fact that we're, we're approaching it in this three-tiered option, and this innovation found right here in our community is going to, it's gonna be a game changer.
Totally.
And I hope that what we will also find is that it will be something that we can replicate in other, with our other South Side schools. Bond, right now, with its Greater Bond Neighborhood Association and its CRA plan, who's also have, are concerned about providing innovation at the Bond Elementary School. We real, we're, we're gonna see some changes going to, that are going to be legacy impactful. They will be impactful for generations, and I'm just very, very proud that our school district is a part of that conversation.
And success breeds success, so.
And success breeds success.
You know, start with one of these.
Well said, Madam Chair.
This can be done?
Congratulations to you all.
This can be done. So, thank you. We're excited.
Madam Chair, may I invite y'all and others to come on over to the Thorpe Street Corridor, 32304. The need is great there.
Yes.
The workers are few. I extend that invitation. South Side to the West Side.
There you go.
We're all in this work together.
It's gonna take all of us.
Absolutely. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And you don't have to stay. I think you've got the votes.
So do we make them, is this another?
We don't get to, no, we don't get to, it's further down when we actually vote on it, but I told them they didn't have to stay for the whole thing. I think we're good. So, thank you very much. All right, so we're gonna go, do we have any persons to be heard?
Yes, Madam Chair. One speaker, Scott Mazer.
Imagine that.
Give us your name, address, you'll have three minutes.
I didn't speak at the last one, so. Scott Mazer, 3319 Dartmoor Drive, Superintendent, Chair, Board. Want to take this opportunity and just talk to you a little bit about equity. Some of the things that have kind of been discussed through the Leon County Schools' Budget Committee meeting, were talked about trying to do something equitable for everybody. And one of the things that I want to make sure that we understand is that equity built on a system that is inequitable is not equity. I do believe that some of the things that are, have been inherited, and there are things that we must do together to fix those things. But when we look at what our state rankings are and where people are, there's an inequitable system in place that doesn't make people feel as valued as others. This is not a call to take from others. That is not what this is about. And this is not to say that we have all the answers. This is something I think we need to do together. But when we look at it, and the School Board is ranked 20th in salary, the Superintendent is ranked 35th, principals are ranked 17th, assistant principals are ranked 15th, and this is your data that has been presented to the Department of Education for 1819. And you look at teachers that are down instructional staff at 48th, and when you include social workers, guidance counselors, school psychologists, and other individuals that are part of our bargaining unit, we're down at 58th. I've done it by dividing it by the months, so I know that it's equitable that way, but there are some things that we really need to address. The teachers that are in these schools are the first responders dealing with a lot of this stuff that you've been talking about tonight. It was also said at that Leon County School Budget Meeting by someone in the staff of Leon County Schools, that it is the quality of the individual that is in place that has the greatest impact on whether something has an effect size. We were talking about reading coaches at the time, but it's the truth. And if we cannot recruit and retain quality individuals, then where are we? So with that, I appreciate your time and look forward to the work. Hopefully, we can get together for our next Labor Relations Meeting as a group to kind of have some of these conversations, but I thank you for your time.
Scott.
Thank you. Over the speakers.
Okay. We have a consent agenda.
I move passage on consent agenda.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes? Do you have anyone?
I do, Madam Chair, and I, I need to apologize to Ms. Jackson and her family and Ms. Michler. I didn't realize it was gonna be an hour and a half later. I would have moved you up to recognition or spotlight, so I apologize. But we have one final piece of the puzzle for the 1920 school year, a very important piece.
Important piece.
Very important. So we'd like to welcome Ms. Doshana Jackson from Gaston County to Leon County, and Ms. Paula Michler, who will be her Assistant Principal. So, Ms. Chat, why don't y'all come up, Doshana, if you would, and maybe introduce yourself to the Board as Mr. Jones gives you a standing ovation.
Yes.
And tell us a little bit about yourself, have your proud family members and friends that are here, and been here for the last hour and a half to sit with you.
Family reunion.
But didn't you learn a lot?
And then also, I'd like to introduce your Assistant Principal and kind of, yeah, there you go. They're all yours.
I don't think you said where she's gonna be. I didn't hear you say that.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bond Elementary School.
Bond Elementary School.
Oh, okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Doshana Jackson, and I'm elated to be here and to Superintendent Hannah and his staff, School Board members, and each of you that are here tonight. I am extremely grateful and appreciative of the opportunity to be welcomed into the Leon County School System. I have along with me Mrs. Paula Michler, who will serve as the Assistant Principal at Bond Elementary School, and I want you to know that the both of us are, both of us are committed to excellence. We look forward to working with the Bond faculty and staff. We look forward to working with the community to build relationships, to enhance student performance and student achievement at Bond Elementary School. In terms of my experience, I'm coming with 20 years of experience in the educational field and 13 years of experience as a principal. I would be remiss not to, to introduce my family that's here. I have my mom that, that's here, as well as my sister.
I have my mom that's here, as well as my sister that's visiting from Rhode Island that will be returning tomorrow. She's been here a month, but she's certainly been at Bond helping to make sure that we're ready to go the first day. And I am extremely excited and proud to see Bond's family. We have several instructional members here, so if you are staying to be recognized, it certainly means a lot that you showed up tonight to support our school.
Well, and Paula, if you want to step up, you were at Rudiger for the last how many years?
I've been there for 14 years as the reading coach and a fifth-grade teacher.
I know their principal was, it was bittersweet, but this was her turn. And Del Shauna, we actually brought on board July 1st, and she was kind of, we were waiting. We had to wait until after-school grades came out because we don't have a deep bench when it comes to turnaround principals. Well, Del Shauna qualifies as a turnaround principal for all of her wonderful work in Gaston County and elsewhere. So we just weren't sure until grades came out where that spot would be. Thankfully, there was only one school that we needed, you know, that particular person in all of our other schools showed, as Gillian said, significant gains, but you're a breath of fresh air. That community has been long-established here in Tallahassee and Leon County, and there's a lot of pride there. I sense that, I know that, and I can, I feel assured that you're going to be the right person at the right place at the right time to move the needle for Bond for many years to come in the future. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Do we take a picture?
If you'd like, if you'd like a selfie moment, we sure can. We can take a picture, and then they probably want to get to Applebee's or someplace to go to dinner.
I'm not talking about the school board with our new principal. Do we do that?
We haven't done that.
Chris is pumping the brakes.
We haven't done that in the past. Not like that's an excuse, but I'm just letting you know.
You know, I'm glad to hear that, Mrs. Superintendent. Ms. Jackson, welcome and welcome your family and others who are your supporters, however board members. At the last board meeting, another new principal, Ms. April Knight, you've probably not met her just yet, but she's also outstanding. She and her family were here, and they were seated over there, and I neglected to make all of these wonderful, wonderful complimentary thank yous for being here. So I said to them tonight, as we've said to you all welcome, that I need to say to Ms. April Knight's family, whose grandmother was here, Auntie this and Uncle that and all those other people, we love you, and now you're hearing that we're thankful to have you having been here as well, okay? Because we are one big family. You don't mind that. We're not taking away from your welcome at all, right? Thank you, ma'am. Oh, hush.
She's in my district. May I also take this moment to announce that on August 1st, Thursday, August 1st, at 12:00 noon, I am inviting all of you to join us for a special reception that I'm hosting for my new principal in my district, Bond Elementary School, at 12:00 noon. Please come and meet her. We're inviting other community members and stakeholders so that she can feel welcome in her new assignment. We are very, very delighted to have you join us in District III.
That's great. And not that there's any competition on this board at all about anything.
No.
On July 29th, at Riley Elementary School, at 8:30, there is a breakfast for the principals and assistant principals, community leaders, movers, shakers, and doers. Coles, so come and have breakfast with us, and then we can go over there and do the reception.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right.
District Five.
Okay, we're down now to 19.01, and all of you have been here so patiently. Have a good evening, and we don't expect you to stay. I'm just saying.
Thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you for being here.
Sorry we kept you so long.
We thought you were students.
I did, I thought you were students.
Yeah, they were a class.
All y'all.
All y'all.
Except Sylvia, you know. Bye Sylvia, we love you.
Bye, love. Bye, boonie.
Okay, we're now going to hear, I see, from our financial folks on the proposed tentative budget for fiscal year ending June 30th.
Good evening. You all should have a packet that says Superintendent's Proposed Tendonet Budget for 2019-2020. If you could turn to page II, this is going to be permission to advertise the Superintendent's Proposed Tendonet Budget. There's a couple of things on this agenda that we have to go through in order to comply with TRIM. So the first item that we need to discuss is the rollback rate. The taxing authority is the School Board of Leon County, Florida, and the millage rate to be levied at 6.167 is more than the rollback rate computed pursuant to Section 200.065 Perin I Florida statute by .93%. So the millage rate that we're proposing to levy, the 6.167 mils, if you look down at number four, it's broken down there to 3.919 is for the required local effort, .748 is the discretionary operating purposes, and 1.5 mils is for the capital outlay projects. Now, what that statement that I read before said, that we are proposing to levy the 6.167 mils, so even though that is less than the millage we levied last year, it's still more than the rollback rate, so we're required to advertise a tax increase. And if you turn to page three, actual number three, not II. You can see basically a description of the rollback rate, that the rollback rate is the rate that we would have to levy to bring in the same amount of revenue as last year. So if you look down at Perin B, where it says using this year's adjusted tax rule of about 18.6 billion, last year it took 4.0195 mils to generate about $76 million. This year, it would only take 3.945 mils. So again, I said, we are required to advertise a tax increase. If you turn to page six, this is the notice that will appear in the paper on Saturday. This is the narrative portion. There's also going to be a budget summary, and as soon as I finish going through the millage, Naomi's going to kind of go through some of the budget. But you can see it has the property tax levy from last year, about 114.5 million compared to this year's proposed tax levy of 117.3 million. Below there, it says a portion of the tax levy is required under state law in order for the school board to receive about $136 million in state educational grants. The sentence below there, the legislature requires us to put in, because it says the required portion has decreased by .65% and represents approximately 6/10 of the total proposed taxes. So what that's saying is that the required local effort has been decreased by the legislature, and we're required to print that in our advertisement. If you turn to the next page, this is a copy of the school capital outlay notice. This is for the 1.5 mils. The board approved the capital outlay budget back in May. The last thing I wanted to touch on, because our property, our millage has continued to decrease through the years. If you turn to page 22, we're going to jump all the way to the back. This chart shows the millage rates going all the way back to 2015, 16, and coming forward to 2019, 20. And you can see the millage rate decreasing over the years. So if you took a $200,000 house that had a $25,000 homestead exemption, and the property value stayed the same throughout the years, this decrease in millage would represent about a $30.80 savings to the taxpayers. I'm going to hand it over to Naomi real quick to go through the budget.
Okay. I know for some of y'all, I think Board Member Jones, this is totally new to him, but this is the same format that we always bring this to you in. The first page, on page eight, it's the budget summary, and this is what will also appear in the ad in the paper. And we're required to list all the funds and the revenues and expenditures there. And you can see out of these funds, 9.8%, our operating expenditures are estimated at 9.8% higher than what we actually spent last year. That's not unusual, because you always, you hope you never spend everything that you budget. So you usually are always budgeting higher than what you expend. We focus mainly on the general fund, because that's the area that we have the most flexibility with. Everything else is pretty much tied to grants, rules and regulations on how those funds have to be spent. So if you look at the general fund, this year, on the revenue side, we're estimating with revenue and ending fund balance and transfers, about $332.7 million. So the other side of that is we appropriate those funds. So we're appropriating all funds. Our appropriations come to about $309 million. We're estimating an ending fund balance of $23.3 million.
How's that compared to last year?
It is a little bit more or around the same. It's real close. Okay, so if you'll go to page eight, which is, like I said, we focus mainly on the general fund, because the federal funds, all those are really kind of restricted how you spend them. If you look at, what I do is we take the original estimated revenues at the beginning of 1819, where we actually are, and you can see we're up about $7 million, which is not unusual, because you have a lot of grants that come in throughout the year that are unaccounted for at the beginning of the budget. If you look at 1920, what we've done is I've taken that revenue from the previous page and just broken it down into the individual areas of where the revenues come from. And the areas that you might want to look at are, that highlight is, if you remember in the past, the best and brightest was always, came after the fact. This year, the legislature rolled the best and brightest into the FEFP. So that's why you see a line item right now for the best and brightest. In the past, it's down in the state, miscellaneous state revenues. You can see that the FEFP, there's an increase of about $6.6 million. Now, I do have to throw a caveat in there, because that looks like that's a lot. That's not taking out, they don't take out the McKay scholarships from that, so I do budget that on the other side. So it does come out on the budget side, but it makes it look like we're getting more money than we actually do, because what they do is they put that money there, and then later on in the year, they subtract out the McKay scholarship, and it's anywhere from two to two and a half million dollars. So as we end up, as of right now, the estimated revenue for state is an increase of 5.5, which is about what we thought it was going to be, because the FEFP is up, we have some categoricals that are up, and then if you look down in the local, you can see the tax dollars, taxes are only up about 1.2 million. Most of that, 1.2, is tied to the .748 mil, the discretionary, because that's the one that they haven't reduced. And when you levy that against a tax rule that increases, that's where you're going to get additional funds. So everything else there, you can see it kind of goes up and down in the different areas, because as the year goes on, we get grants, we get funds that come in and that change those balances. So you can see, when we finish there, our ending fund balance, which includes not just the unrestricted, it includes restricted projects, it includes our emergency fund balance, it includes encumbrances and reserve for inventory. So we ended the year with $49 million left over. That's at the end of the year. Now, what we do with that is we take that revenue and that ending fund balance, and then it rolls forward and is re-appropriated in the 1920 year. So no, we don't have this magical $49 million sitting there. It's reallocated. That's what we ended with. So we add that to any new dollars that we get, and then we reallocate. So if you look on page 10, this is where we take the budget and actually show you where every penny of the general fund is allocated out. Starting at the top, our biggest expense is our staffing plan. That's the plan, that's the school's budgets. That's their staffing, that's their supplies, that's their custodians, that's everything that it takes to operate the school. And that plan is given to each principal, and we have a staffing, staff, staffing plan staff that works. And that process starts like in January and February, they start working those plans, because we try to get that plan to the principals prior to reappointments, because they need to know how many units they have available in order to reappoint their teachers. And then it breaks down into the various other different areas, the district-wide insurances, which are like our liability insurances, our workers' comp, our property and casualty. Charter schools, we have to take that out, because of course, that fund comes to us and it goes right back out. So you can see charter schools have gone up about $400,000 from last year for what, because one of our charter schools has grown a little bit. Rest are kind of maintaining. We set aside for the McKay scholarships, then you've got the district cost centers, and just all the various different areas as you go in there. And as you go behind on pages 11, 12, and 13, I break it down, or it's broken down even more into what makes up those various different numbers. And I'm not going to go, because you've got to, you'll have next week to look at these if you have any questions, but just so you can get an idea of how the funds are allocated and where they go. The next couple of pages are just breaking down those expenses in a little more detail. One's by object code, which is salaries, benefits, supplies, and then there's another one that breaks it down by function, whether it's instruction, staff's in-service, administration, or that type. Once you go past there, most of the other stuff is informational, and the other one you go past, the remaining portion of the packet is the federal food service, capital outlay debt service. That's kind of where we are. If you have any questions, or if you, I know if it's brand new to you and you've only gotten it, and I apologize, worked all weekend long, couldn't get it to you any sooner.
I want to take it, Madam Chair. If I may, the question is for you or the superintendent. If I wanted to recommend that transportation expenses, so that we could ensure that our Title I schools could go on field trips, and we find a way for the district to encumber the cost of transportation, such that it wouldn't have to come out of school budgets, those monies, they would expend for transportation, for outreach, and other types of engagements. If we were to bear the cost of that, at what point in this process do I make that recommendation?
That's a good question, and I'd like to know the answer to that, too.
Well, I think as we're going through, we have to be able to put numbers with all of these initiatives. So are we talking about one school, one field trip? Are we talking about 20 schools and 20 field trips? We talk, you know, just so it's, so I think we just, like I said before, instead of just, I want to have transportation for Title I schools to go on field trips. Well, that's hard to quantify, and it's hard to put a number to. But if we're going to set aside dollars and add dollars for transportation, you know, a lot of our Title I money is already, as far as the schools and everything, is already set as far as the Title I plan is concerned. So if you're looking at general revenue dollars to support transportation for Title I schools, I need, I need it more, I need you to define it a little more, right?
So is that, what I'm saying, across, we have the schedule of, I guess, the budget schedule. Ultimately, the culminating activity is on the 10th, when we finalize the budget, we vote on it to then be sent to DOE. Where between now and then, does our concern, our issues, our projects, those initiatives that may very well matter to us, where we create what I would like to describe as legacy impacts as electeds, right? At what point does that occur in this process? At which of our meetings going forward does that occur, whereby then staff can tell us what the impacts of that recommendation? For example, I've not forgotten this from our strategic plan, our strategic meeting. You drew a line in the sand and said that if it was related to monies being spent on school safety. As a new elected, that spoke volumes to me, because it showed me that you were going to use your elected authority to manifest that what mattered to you. And so I think we all have that same opportunity, and it's through this dialogue of give and take as the legislative arm of this government, that we build consensus, we compromise, we talk about what matters. And I want to know, where in the process does that type of conversation occur, where if it's you safety, if it's you cultural sensitivity, if it's me, title, wherever it is, I just want to know, across this expansive time, does that happen? That's what I want to know. Teacher salaries.
Bam. Bam.
Without it being collective bargaining.
What I keep hearing Superintendent say is, as specific as you can be in your request, that gives direction to them to say, this is, if you want this, this is how much it would cost.
So do I do that now, or do I do that the next meeting?
I think you can do it now, you can do it by email, you, you know.
So if you go, if you go into, let me give you, so if you go back to page, go back to page 10, right? So we have allocated out the staffing plan, transportation budgets, all the budgets that we have traditionally supported, the increases, school safety budget, the contract with the Sheriff's Department. with the Sheriff's Department, all of that's been allocated out. And you see a fund balance that remains of 17,150, 17 million, 156,000, which is very good news for me, right? Because what that, what that shows me is if we received about 3.4 million of new money increasing the BSA, right, that we've added to our unrestricted fund balance by doing cost-saving measures again this year. So if you back out the three, if you back out the 3% hole required by, required by law, that's about 10 million. So that frees up about 7.2, between 7.1 and 7.2, that can be added to support salary increases, increases in transportation, increases in counselors to the staffing plan. So all of those initiatives, if you, there are seven, basically between 7.1 and 7.2 million dollars for, up, for basically up for discussion, right? Everything else has been reallocated to support what we have that's existing. So those conversations, whether it's negotiations with the, with LCTA, with Lesba, with 1010, your, your, your priorities as board members, my priorities as superintendent, all of those things will be discussed over the, over the coming months with, with that number. Now, I, you know, I would, I made a commitment last year because I learned from, last year, we held a little north of the three, of the 3%. And I said, this was it, that I didn't feel comfortable doing anything else. And then we went back and gave additional, additional money to teachers, okay? So I've learned from that experience. I'm, I'm going to draw down and I've talked, had talks with both Kim, Ms. Banks, and Ms. Coughlin about this, that we're going to hold firm on the, on the $10 million to 3% and the other 7.1 or 7.2 is fair, is, is fair game. So I think that is, to me, that is the, the best way to go about it. But you have a lot of people with a lot of opinions and I just need to be clear because when I present my ideas and my thoughts, I'm going to have dollar amounts that are attached to each one that will account for that 7.15 million dollars. And so when you pay transportation to, for Title I schools to, um, field trips, I, I just, that's.
And I know that, and Mr. Superintendent, I'm the first to admit that that sounds specious. And I say again, I know it sounds ad nauseam. I am new to this process. However, moving forward beyond this year, I would hope that we would, and I, I know you don't want, I know we are reluctant to make policy changes, but I am very much interested in either we providing, are providing public notice that every member of the school board is in somehow invited if they would choose to participate in the budget process because then these things that we would want to have as legacy projects or our concerns as electeds could be manifest early on before we get to this final stage. And that may be something for us to consider, right? I don't know if that's foreboding, I don't know if that's permissible, but, but, but for me this year, when that what mattered to me, we were, the budget was far gone before that what mattered to me was even solicited. And so I think that we, and so, I know this is my first one, and so I'm, and I'm, I'm looking forward to the give and take of the conversation as it moves forward. But I think there's a, you know, a process for us to review again on the other side of this year's budget for the 2020, 21 school year. So that's just something.
In response, assuming that I move to the left chair, which is the normal progression, it would be my intention to ask, first, let me, let me, let me put a pause there. Let me back up. Because what I first want to say is I am unbelievably impressed with how quickly Ms. Banks has transferred her considerable skillset to understanding school budgets, which are not the same as every other budget in the state. So thank you for that.
Slightly different.
It's very different and I, I'm completely impressed with how quickly you've, um, come to understand and develop another level of expertise in your otherwise already robust resume. That said, she's brand new. But next year, what I would like to ask, and it would be my intention to ask, is if I'm sitting in the chair, or even if I'm not, is that we start in the fall and we have a review, because we haven't done this since before Fred Varn was here.
Yes.
To go back and, and, and educate the board on the staffing plan, which is the biggest chunk, and walk us through exactly, because I think, what I think we will find out is that there may be some areas of discretion which we can influence for your, as you put, your legacy. But there are an awful lot of things that, that are, you know, if our insurance rates go up, well, we, we voted on that the other night, right? Or, and, but that was an opportunity to save some money and, and we, for lots of reasons, good reasons or whatever, we decided not to do that. But that, so therefore, that's going to be one of those fixed costs that we can't touch. We're going to have to negotiate with the teachers. That, that will be a different thing. So when, when liability insurance or property, uh, we're not, sorry, we don't do property insurance, when, um, any of those, the FRS contribution, the employer contribution to the retirement system, those are the kind of fixed costs that we can't impact. I would argue, with all due respect to the Superintendent, that our bonds, the fact that we have a triple, we have a AAA bond rating, don't we, I think?
We did have.
We have a AAA bond rating because we have more than 3%. They usually prefer that we have 10% in reserves. The state's minimum requirement for which we are penalized if we fall below is three. So I get nervous when we get that close to three. I'd rather it be four-ish at least, just to give us some cushion because we've had mid-year cuts before. I mean, when a recession hits, we have, in the middle of the year, six months from now, they're like, whoops, or the third calculation or, you know, comes in and, and we get to pay money back because we had a hurricane and our students left or whatever, which is what's happening in the panhandle. So I think the quick, the quick answer to your question is, when, before final adoption, we as a board could make a motion, if you had three votes, you could make a motion to say, I want to reject everything the Superintendent has proposed and this is the board budget that we're going to propose. You probably, you have that authority, I believe. But the reality is, you're, you're better off working with the Superintendent saying, this is really important to me, help me figure out how much it would cost to do three, um, bus, three field trips a year at these three schools or whatever. Because then, you know, it can, it can sort of work through the process. But I think an educational process for all of us, because honestly, I didn't even, I haven't ever had one of those, except one-on-one, when I've, you know, packed out in your office. But it might be helpful, I think, to start earlier and everyone will feel like they better understand and contribute to the process as a whole, starting whenever, as soon as you catch your breath from this. And that's, I mean, one more thing and I'll hush. The turnaround time that is imposed on our finance department is unbelievable. They don't, when did you get the, the?
Friday.
Friday. So when they left here yesterday afternoon, when we were still having our marathon meeting, I'm guessing you guys went back to your offices.
Oh, my.
When you're here all weekend, I mean, they, you know, it's all they could do to get this document to us. So kudos to you.
Thank you.
Much appreciation for what you do every summer. When everybody else is working four day, four workdays, the finance department is here all summer.
You're welcome.
Doing the budget. So thank you for what you've done. That, that would be my attempt at an answer.
And I also think, I heard the Superintendent say, it, like you gave the example, if that's something that's important to you, to, to get it to him, get it to them so they can cost it out.
And then the other thing, or what you do, what I would recommend doing, and I, I agree with what Ms. Rasmussen said, if, on the front end, to look at our budget as a whole and for a better, a deeper dive and better explanation as to, this is why we have transportation, this is what goes into all the nuances of the budget. But the, but what she said also is, at the end of, the fiscal year doesn't end until June 30th. And here we are, trying to figure out how much we allocated, rake the leaves back in to the, to the bucket, reallocate back out, right, with some budget cuts, cuts to different departments and to the other creative things we tried to do to come up with, to even have a 17 million dollar fund balance. So the turnaround time and the work on Kim and her staff is, I mean, it's, it's tough and it's time sensitive because we, then we're heading directly into another school year and we have unions chomping at the bit to see, talk about salary increases. Or what you could do potentially about your item is just put a dollar number on it. Say, I want to, I recommend we take $100,000 and divert it to, or earmark it for transportation, for Title I schools.
Title I schools.
To go on field trips. And then we see if, uh, if that, how much traction that gets with all the other voters and members and, and if it gets traction and becomes a line item, then it's a line item that she sets aside and then Title I schools make requests for that lot, that amount of money till it runs out, right? Kind of like what we did with the arts and athletics. We're giving the money to the schools for arts and athletics and then giving them the autonomy to, to drive down the cost for, for parents and, and families, for kids to participate in after-school activities. So you could, you could also do it that way. And that way, we have a number. I want 100,000, 150, whatever, whatever it is.
This has been enlightening because as you can imagine, as Ms. Rasmussen herself has described, this is my first time, but I do know that I have things that I ran as a candidate for and things that I hung my hat on and promises that I intend and with your cooperation to keep. And so I want to know how that occurs. And so this year can be my sightseeing year. But I do know that going forward, that I would hope that there would be a willingness to create a process by which members of the board are included in the budget process before we find ourselves, all of us are included, each, I mean, individually, right? Because I trust the chair, the chairs are, whoever the chair will be, will be competent. But we all sit in separate seats and represent, and have different values as expressed in that information that we shared with Dr. Gale, and I know that all of those interests matter to us.
Right, and we're going to do a deeper dive. We have a workshop on Monday, so take this, digest it, not literally, but digest it, read it.
I got chocolate.
You know, and then on Monday, when we come back, then we'll go through it a little deeper. And then also, I, I agree, once we get the school year started and things settle down, I'm not sure exactly what time of year, that we, when the pressure's not so, and things aren't so tense to get it done, once we finish with negotiations and have settled this issue, that we do, that we do go back and have conversations, big picture about, about our budget.
Yes.
Superintendent, you brought up the issue of the money that was allocated to the schools for athletics and arts and things like that. And so I assume that's part of your budget that you're going to produce. For me to feel good about doing that again in that same way, I'd like to see what the results were and how it was spent and how it was, what, what the rules are in terms of who gets input into that, how it gets distributed, because, you know, you hear different things on the street about, it's at one school, it was done this way, at one school, it's done that way. And I know we have some autonomy, but I think there needs to be a process, if there's a goal for that money, how it is spent and how it's not spent, or how it's distributed. And I have, will bring back the concept that they cost it out, which I appreciated, of looking at the issue of equity. I'm just going to keep saying it about schools because we know that we can walk in some schools and they look glamorous and, you know, beautiful, and other schools don't look as beautiful. And some of that is caused not because we don't give the same FTE and the same dollar amount, the same staffing plan based on so-and-so, but the ability of some schools to raise money because of their after-school programs, it varies widely, you know, from, you know, $50,000 to $1,000, you know? And so that kind of discretionary money that some principals have to keep their tablets up to date and to keep their furniture up to date and to throw pizza parties and to do all those kinds of things and give staff t-shirts and, you know, that we have a school district of have and have nots when it comes to that, that part of the equity, the, the ability to call a parent to say, you know, can you print t-shirts for all of us? And some people can do that and some people don't have the parents who have, own the company that can do that. So I really want us to look at, that's going to be my thing that I want to look at, is a pot of money, and I don't know how much it is, that we distribute in a way that takes into account the percentage of free and reduced lunch students at a school, not just Title I, but across the board, because everybody has children who can't afford things. So I think if we, and, and they actually came up with a chart, which I thought was quite interesting, and I would appreciate it if you would email that out so the board members could see the kind of way you could do that.
Where you saw the breakdown.
There's also, there's also an inequity, and it's because I have firsthand experience of this and I spoke to a few other small school principals today. When you have a small school and you give everybody the same, it, it's, it's not as fair as it may sound because their base costs, like in the staffing plan, if you have to pay for your copier and it costs $12,000 a year, it costs almost that much at a small school as a big school, but it's a very small percentage of your budget if you're a big school and not at another. So I would just like us to look at the impact of small schools and what sort of help we can give them and just look, someone explained to me about equity the other day that I'd, I'd never gotten before and that's, did we already talk about that, stand on a box?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's a real good way to look at it. How can we get the boxes a little more evil so, equal so everybody can look over the fence? And that's my budget priority. If we can take a crack at that and maybe it's not giving out, you know, even though it's easier to do, $100,000 here, 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 maybe we give 80,000 here and 120 over there. So I'd like some looking at that.
A per student or something, maybe? I don't know.
Yeah. Just a weighted, a weighted factor to take into account equity.
I'd like to ask for, I don't want an answer right now, but before the law, because you're asking about Title I schools, I would like to know if we have turned, if, if, a couple of years ago, we gave Title I money back. I say a couple, it may have been 10. I mean, I don't remember if, it's been a number of years ago, but I was, and I know that there have been times when, and that's in fact the reason that I initiated along with Chair Wood, the Title I Advisory Council. So I would like a look at, if, if we're talking about using general fund money to go into the Title I schools, I would like to know what they're doing with their Title I funds now and how much did they, you know, are we, do we have carry forward? Do we have, you know, where are we? Are we, if, because, because if they're spending every single dime they have on it, on their top, top priorities and they really don't have money to go on field trips, then that's one thing. But if we're not being as efficient and cost-effective as we could be and we're giving money back, which I hope is not the case, then, so that, that's a question I'd like to see.
Same is true with the flex funds. I, I saw the balances on the flex funds the other day and I was surprised, frankly, that some schools, it's their sub-fund and their flex fund. And there's the chart, and I'd like the school board members to get to look at that, but it was like, some schools had so much left over and some had none. I'm like, why wasn't that money spent? You know, if, if, if they needed it, why wasn't it spent on the students? So I think we need to ask some questions like that. If, if we're giving some schools too much, I mean, the high schools particularly had a lot left over, maybe they don't need as much.
I would just, I would caution that every child has a parent that's a taxpayer and when you start sending more tax of their tax dollars to support other children and not their children, there may be a potential issue. I hear you, uh, but if, but I could certainly see some people raising the issue and the question, why is my child not receiving the same amount that every other child is in Leon County schools? Why isn't my school receiving? Because you're asking me then to write a check or to donate the t-shirts or to donate this or we have extra money to pay. That's why the system is set up like it's set up, that FTE follows the child. They're worth the same amount of money. Any enhancements come from the federal government and federal programs, not at the general, at, usually at the general level. So I would just caution that there's going to be another side that's going to come back and say, wait a minute, my, my child, we pay taxes too, why are these schools receiving more per child than my student and my school?
How come I had to sell, how come I had to sell ham so that my kid could make the baseball team and I had to sell wrapping paper so that we can have a budget for the band? And we had to buy this and we had to buy that and we have to donate this and we have to donate that? I know, I know it's a sensitive issue, but we really.
But we're not, we're not, I don't think that Ms. Woods is talking about diminishing the FTE compared to one school to another, but the Supreme Court has already said that separate and equal was unconstitutional. So the whole fact about how much a taxpayer pays compared to the money So the whole fact about how much a taxpayer pays compared to the monies that are invested in another school, then Riley and Oak Ridge and Bond will all, and Pine View will always have old furniture, and they will always look, they will always look far different than the schools that we find in northeast Tallahassee.
That's not true. That's not true. They receive the exact same, well, actually, they receive more money when it comes to Title I than other schools on the federal side. They receive equal money that every other school does when it comes to staffing and with flexible spending. Every single child receives the same amount of money. So when it's budgeted, you can explain to a parent of a child at Charles or a parent at child at Bond or a parent at child at Griffin, they're all weighted the, the exact same.
Capital outlay.
Now, as far as furniture, there, there may be, I mean, I can't speak to the furniture issue about capital outlay. Danny sent me some information of the, you know, we've cut capital outlay FF and E dollars off about 10 years ago. So we are going to look at the, who's received money, who's received furniture, and who hasn't. If you talk about Bond, Bond's one of the newer schools in our district.
And Bond, and I shouldn't have said Bond, but Oak Ridge, Pine View, Riley don't look like the other schools and, and I, and I.
Neither do Raw and Cobb and Rudiger.
But, but they, yeah, well, I'm talking about the schools in my district. And I've visited the other schools in other parts of the, of the district. And I think, but I think Ms. Woods' point, I mean, Chairwoman Woods' point is well made. We're not talking about diminishing or taking anything from anyone else. We're talking about the allocation of discretionary dollars that will provide equity such that all children will enjoy the same type of classroom experience and that teachers will be armed with the same type of software and accoutrements to, to, to create what we described earlier today as a great climate for learning. And that's what we want to ensure. And that doesn't mean that anybody else has to suffer that, that, that we would provide that equity.
So is a lot of this, well, I should note this, but I'll just ask it anyway, because I do, left up to the site-based management as to how dollars are used at these schools?
Absolutely. And some principals are more frugal than others, some, or maybe they're saving, maybe they're squirreling away flexible spending to buy some copiers, or maybe, I mean, I can't speak to, and I don't want, I'm not in the business of micromanaging our people. And maybe I'm a better manager of money as a school principal than someone else. And, and the way our model is set up, based on FTE, that the larger schools receive more money because they have more mouths to feed.
Exactly.
But there, there is, and that's sort of back to the large school, small school, there is a way to look at fixed costs and what's above that, you know? And it is, when you're a small school and you get $20,000 for flex funds for the year and another school gets 200,000, that 20,000 goes, doesn't go as far.
Right. And we had the conversation too about, you have the, you have the schools on one end of the spectrum, you have the Title I schools on the other end of the spectrum, and then you have the middle schools, the, the schools in the middle that are really the ones, they don't have the parent support and they don't have the Title I dollars. So if you're looking at Sullivan and Cobb and Raw and countless others, they don't have either one, right? Everybody's fighting for Title I, everybody's saying something about the other ones that they get parent, parents to raise all this money, and the Title I's get federal money and these one, the schools in the middle, they don't receive either one. So it's a tough, it's a tough.
Yes, it's tough. That's why it's not just like a, if we can take a, one bite out of the apple, it doesn't disrupt the whole system is what I'm suggesting, not, you know, turn everything upside down, but.
No, not at all.
Let's look at a, let's look at a little piece and see if we could help on some of these issues that we know to be true.
So do we need a motion to approve the advertisement?
We do. We need item five, page II.
So move.
You have to read it verbatim.
We got to read it verbatim.
II.
Go to II. We have to read it as printed.
Is someone volunteering to do that?
Yes, I will. Is somebody there?
Okay, Ms. Ball.
Where are we now? II?
Number five.
Number five.
Five, everything in bold.
I move, Madam Chairboard Members, I move that the board grant permission to advertise all the appropriate notices to include the following tentative, tentative millage rates for the fiscal year July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020. A, for local required effort, 3.919. B, for discretionary operating purposes, .748. C, for capital outlay projects, 1.500. Total proposed millage, 6.167.
To set.
And to set a public hearing on the 2019-2020 tentative budget for Tuesday, July 30, 2019, at 6:00 PM at the Aquiland-Hollow Center, 3955 West Pensacola Street, Tallahassee, Florida.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes? Okay. Well, there you go. I'm glad we got to talk about the budget some. 1902, public hearing adoption, Superintendent recommends the following. Our benefits, folks, come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
At the June 18th board meeting, I presented some benefits department policy additions and changes to you, and I would like to briefly address those with you again.
Speak into the mic, please.
The first one was the, an addition of a policy regarding the bidding of our insurance benefits every three years. We are required to do this, and so we would like to add this to board policy. The second one was the voluntary sick leave bank. We would like to make that policy a lot less restrictive so that we have more participation, we have more usage from our employees, we would like to remove some language, such as catastrophic language, we would like to change the usage requirements to one physician's statement instead of two. And then lastly, the transfer of sick leave from employee to employee, we would like to change that so that the member who is transferring the leave only has to retain five days instead of 20.
Yeah, I remember that.
If this is a public hearing, so this time I'll ask if there are any members of the public who wish to speak to this item. If not, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I move the Superintendent's recommendation.
Second.
It moved in second. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And it passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have a public hearing adoption for overtime and compensatory time. Is it, are you going to speak to that?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're requesting to revise the, the policy to clearly define our work week as Sunday through Saturday for overtime purposes and to allow comp time to be paid out over 240 hours and also to clarify guidelines for clocking in and out and to clean up some of the language for fair labor standards.
Is there anyone here to speak on that item, on that, anyone here to speak on that? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing then and ask for a motion.
Move approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the good work you do, too.
Thank you.
Sorry it took two and a half hours.
Oh, we're a chatty bunch. And I see Dr. Gale up here for 1904. This is advertising amendments to the, you go ahead and tell us what it is.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent, Board Members, and Attorney Williams. Item 1904 speaks to the approval to advertise amendments to Policy 5112, which is our policy on student assignment and entrance requirements. As stated yesterday during the workshop, this policy with the changes that we are recommending to you will be more in line with what was passed with state statutes during the last legislative session. It also allows more choices, if you will, for our parents who are coming to register children, and the requirements for what they can bring is in line with the Department of Motor Vehicles.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Next, we have 1905, is my right?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Good evening. We spent, Madam Chair, Superintendent, Board Members, and Attorney Williams, we spent extensive time talking about this particular item. And Ms. Nicholson, our HR Director Extraordinaire, and myself feel very confident that what we're bringing before you is the end of what will result in compensation for those athletic directors who worked times that they were not properly compensated.
I move approval.
Been moved and seconded?
Yes.
Before we vote on this item, I just wanted to make a few points. First, I want to read a little clip on the statute of limitations. The federal Department of Labor is very clear. This is exactly on the site and it would go on and on and on and on. Employees have two years to recover any wages lost through underpayment. That's two years from the date when the underpayment took place. If they don't learn about it until five years later, they're out of luck. The item that is before us, which I was a no on the first time it went through, then it came to us with, I think, five more people, and then it was returned, and now it's seven more people. The law clearly outlines that we are not held accountable for this. There are dates on some of those that go back to 1999, 20 years ago, 20 years ago. So the law provides for us not to have to fund this, not to have to, and I don't even think these are claims, I think we went after these people, providing for them, we've become a bank, we're handing out money to people, and it makes me furious, this is a direct slap in the face to our teachers, to our teachers who go home and do lesson plans and grade papers and answer emails and set up their classroom, and they work from their heart, hours beyond what they're paid. This, this is super frustrating. And Board Member Jones wants to find some money to fund Title I field trips? Here it is. Here it is, $90,000 that could be spent toward our children. Every time we hand out money like this, we're taking away from our students and our teachers. And I am absolutely a no on this item. I would urge other board members, members to stand up with me and be, be a no on this.
I would just ask for counsel on this.
We've discussed this before, and I'm going to try my hardest to go back and reiterate what has been explained before. There certainly are statutes of limitations with regard to the time in which somebody can bring in action against the, any entity, including the school district. The issue and the concern that has always been here has not been whether these individual claimants can bring in action against the school district, but whether they can report to the Department of Labor and in turn have the Department of Labor open up and walk, come down and open our books to determine what's going on. The issue that we have here is that we couldn't, if we were presented with a request for, or an investigation, the opening of an investigation or request for information, we could not substantiate what employees did or did not do. We have been in the situation before, I think it was maybe 15, 18 years ago, a very similar situation. All we need is one complainant to report to the Department of Labor, they come down and they open our entire district's books. This, at the, I don't remember if it was at this time or if it was the prior time, but you all, the, the HR department was presented with this issue, you've looked into this and you've closed up the loopholes that allowed this to happen. That's my understanding.
That is correct.
So again, where the concern is not about bringing in action here in the state of Florida, the concern is not about bringing in action directly by these individuals to the, the school district. The concern is the grave cost and expenditure of resources that the district would have to incur in dealing with an investigation by the Department of Labor. And I understand that the Department of Labor's website has information for individuals who are looking for information, but that's not necessarily the concern. The Department of Labor on its own, or in response to complaints that it receives, can then, just like OCR can, can come in and open up our books and take a look at it and anything and everything. And if we cannot substantiate that individuals have received the payment for work performed, then we are potentially responsible for not only reimbursement or, or return of those payments, but penalties. And so what I think this is, what the district is trying to do is to address the remaining individuals for which there is likely to be a concern so that this book, this door can be closed so that we can move forward with the loophole shut. Correct?
Okay.
And may I comment?
And I think I want to clarify, or at least from my perspective, it's not that we're afraid of having anybody come and look at anything. We're not trying to hide anything. The problem is the cost, the, the time and labor expense to try to find the needles and the haystacks that they may be asking for. And having been through a couple of significant federal investigations, I can tell you that the, I mean, the blocks and building, is it still full of boxes with paper? No. Okay. I'm just saying, the time it takes, I mean, this cost is nothing compared to trying to defend, I think, and I don't mean it's nothing, that, I don't mean that, I really didn't mean that, Mr. Striplin or Mr. Jones, $90,000 is $90,000 and we shouldn't give it away. But I think on a cost benefit analysis, you would, that your professional recommendation is, let's just close this chapter and move on. Is that right, Mr.?
Also on the advice of counsel, no, you know, this frustrates me as well, but it's not like we haven't talked to other people, but if you separate yourself, your emotions, and do what's best for the school district as a whole, this is the right, this is the right decision.
Business decision. It's a business decision.
Absolutely.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Having heard before through a workshop, we brought in someone who talked to us about this. I think Deborah Minnis talked to us about this, and while it does not taste good and I feel good, in my mind, this is where I am. These folks worked, no, let's say that differently, these personnel just worked for this system. They should have been paid then, they were not. That's the problem. I hope that we have discovered what caused the snafu in the system that caused them to have not been compensated. Hopefully that will never happen again. At this point, I hope that we have found all of the possible other, who are these people? A.D.s or?
A.D.s.
Yes, athletic directors, so that we never have to visit this again. Because I think it would be unfair on, on my part not to go ahead and pay them, okay? And I know that Superintendent is doing what he needs to do as the manager of this system to make certain, as I said, that it doesn't happen again. So I'm ready to vote in favor of, of, of this particular settlement as it is called.
Call of a question.
Have questions been called?
Second.
I have a motion, actually, I already have a motion in a second, because when the question's called, just to clarify.
And I seconded his motion to call the question. So now it's, now, actually, we're supposed to vote.
Yes.
So calling the question, and you've seconded it, and now I'm asking if we're voting to call the question, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so all in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, not in favor of calling the question? Okay. So now I am going to ask, we've had a motion, we've had a second, all in favor of this motion, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
No. Mr. Jones, were you a yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, so that was four to one. Thank you very much. Okay, next we have 1906, Ms. Lawbritton.
Good evening, Board, Chair, Superintendent. 1906 is Superintendent's recommendation for approval of Ram Construction Development, guaranteed maximum price as the construction manager at risk at Fairview Middle School, Phase 5B, total renovation build out of Buildings 3 and 4. Their guaranteed maximum prices, $8,206,169.97.
I move the Superintendent's recommendation.
Second.
It moved in seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
So this is very, if I may, Madam Chair, this is very exciting. They started this summer, we approved, or you all approved, just under $1 million to go ahead and start on Building 3 with renovations of some of the restrooms and the mezzanine to help with the air, the air system. This will 100% complete the renovation pieces of the classroom buildings 3 and 4. The last piece will come back, I believe, in the spring of '21, and, and ask for the final, final motion to approve the site plan to demolish Building 1 and to finish the site work. So this is a, this is an exciting day. I see Heath Anan here, the owner of Ram Construction, and I, I thank you all for approving this.
Okay.
All right.
Next, it's 1907, Ms. Lawbritton.
1907 is amendment to professional services. 1907, Superintendent recommends the board approval of Hoy Stark Architects, Amendment 1, professional services contract.
Services Contract for Rickards High School, Phase 4, new construction, Building 24, renovate, remodel Buildings 13, 19, project. The amendment cost is $145,585.
I move acceptance for the Superintendent's recommendation.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it passes. 1908?
1908 is the Superintendent's recommendation to approve Hoist Ark Professional Service, Ark, Architect Professional Services for Rickards High School, Phase 5, demolition of Buildings 3, 5, 6, and 14, renovate and remodeling of Buildings 1 and 19, and the remaining demolition of Building 4. Price is $568,128.
Have a motion?
Move the Superintendent's recommendation, Madam Chair.
Moved in second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Next is the 1909 Leon County Schools Mental Health Plan, which I believe we got a presentation earlier in the evening.
Move approval?
Move approval? It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes. 1910?
1910 is the Superintendent's recommendation for approval of surplus property and vacant land purchase as is sale agreement of .22 plus or minus acre, parcel 112542E0010. We, we are at, our sale price is $55,000.
Move the Superintendent's recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Let me, moved and seconded, we have a question.
Yes, ma'am. That goes back to capital outlay?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, it passes. And 1911, which is the memorandum of understanding that we spoke at great length about tonight for the South City Foundation. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
It passes, so that's great. And down here, reports from Board Liaison, School Board Members Tripplin, Children's Services Council.
I, every time I try to talk about this, we've been here for like three hours, so I'm going to try to make it really quick. I tried yesterday. So, again, Children's Service Council Planning Committee, which I believe will have recommendations by, I want to say October, and there's a timeline to it, but a lot of what we, we had presentations from a lot of the nonprofits in our community, talking about, the, the big, the big term was gap in services, what is out there that we're not being fulfilled. And I just wanted to share some of these with you that came up in the conversation because I thought you would find them very interesting. And these were Big Ben Homeless Coalition, Breon, Early Learning Coalition, went on for a, a long time, Pay Center for Girls, Hang Tough Foundation, Legal Center for Florida, I mean, there was several of them. So some of the gaps in services that the Children's Service Council is hoping to, is hoping to be able to fulfill if this passes, screening youth mental health at younger ages, helping parents bond at birth with their children, quality funding for VPK was a big, big discussion in Superintendent, of course, we talked a lot about, a lot about our funding of that within the school district, money for school readiness, so a lot about early learning before they get to us, parent referral services, the cost to be a foster parent, lack of affordable housing was in there, respite care for families with kids with disabilities, emotional support, team pregnancy prevention, gang prevention, food insecurity, so these were some of the gaps that, that this group really fleshed out, and it was just a very, it was a very powerful meeting, and I think we all walked away learning something about our community and feeling that urge to, to support this initiative and to, and to see what comes out of this. And hopefully that we'll see students in our school doing better because of some of the things that might transpire with this. So I just wanted to share that with you guys. And it's, as soon as this planning committee breaks, I think there will be a formal recommendation as far as the timeline and a marketing plan to pitch this information to our community to see if there is support for the ballot initiative. So there you go, two minutes or less.
You did it, girl, you did it.
Thanks for your service on that.
Thank you for doing that.
It's been great, it's been wonderful, Superintendent's been there as well.
Good, good.
Superintendent's comments?
I'd just like to invite you all to breakfast or lunch tomorrow at our administrative training. Breakfast is at 8:00, lunch probably around 11:30, and then we'll have breakfast also on Thursday morning at, at 8:00, if you all want to come by and, and say hello. I know some of, some of you have, are retired, others are not, so your schedules are not nearly as flexible, but if you'd like to come by and just have breakfast with the administrators or lunch, you're, you're more than welcome. We're at the Turnbull Center at Florida State.
Continuing concerns from board members, are there any at this time? This is not a concern, this is, I'd like to just say, I'm happy about, we are currently, the school board is currently advertising for a marketing coordinator that is being paid partially by Lively and partially by the district, and so when Dr. Gail sends us out the link, I hope you will all put it on your Facebook pages, because we want to get a top professional. We don't get that many new jobs in this district, this is new, and we want to get the best person we can get to really move the district forward on all the things we've been talking about, telling our story, getting out there and letting parents know that they have a good choice in Leon County Schools, and I think this person will help us move the ball of that. We've also been talking to David Voss, which a lot of you know from the Florida School Boards Association.
Yes.
He's come to the district, and he's met with the Superintendent and the team, and is doing a survey, and I believe he's going to have a report for us at our next workshop. He's done a communications audit for our district.
Oh, okay.
At a very reasonable price. And so, talking to us about what we need to move forward, to really move the ball ahead and be in the 21st century.
So he's not interested in the job, though?
No, 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 no.
Okay, that's fine, great, great.
Not a bit, but he, he is, I think, going to provide some valuable input and feedback for what direction, a communications plan for the district, so I'm excited about it. That's it. So it's not a continuing concern, but I have brought this up so many times, I thought you, it's nice to know.
We're happy to see you making progress, ma'am.
Yes, yes, very, very happy.
Feels good, doesn't it?
Any new issues, anyone wants to bring in?
Yes.
Or did you have a continuing concern or a new issue?
No, you can go, madam, I defer to you, madam.
Thank you, sir.
New or continuing?
Oh.
It can be either one, it's okay.
It's new, and it's about our schools that are about to open. I invite you all to the Thorpe Street corridor, and I ask you to go west on Thorpe Street and look at Raw on your left, you will see an outstanding display of Raw with the new landscaping that Dr. Smo, yeah, did you see it? You've got to see it, I mean, you know, Leon has its lion, other schools will have what they've got. Now Raw has this wonderful RAA in white, huge stones, it looks so good, and it is a school of the arts and such. And I invite you also to continue traveling down the Thorpe Street corridor, and take a left on Calderato, and go up to Riley. The Riley community is rallying around the new principal and the leadership there, and they have been out in the yard, I'm about to give away a secret, they repainted the bear. They would not let me touch a brush, but when I tell you the kind of energy and synergy that is being brought there, it was just wonderful. They did not know that I was going to be giving them a shout out, and while that's just outside the schools, we will be talking about some other things that are going on in the schools academically later. But it just feels good to see the kind of positivity, you know, at, at some of these school sites, because good schools build good communities, and our communities are there, needed to say that.
And Vance?
I've already invited you to join us on 8th Thursday, August 1st, at the Bond Elementary School at 12:00 noon for a reception, welcoming our new principal. But many of you may recall that when we had our former student district advisory chair, I suggested to her that we have a district-wide voters registration day in our local high schools. The newest student advisory district chair, Ms. Madeline Finok.
Finok.
Finok, took that idea to the Florida Student Government Association meeting statewide, and they ratified the resolution to accept that recommendation. She has since then reached out to, she is now working, we, Ms. Madeline.
Finok.
Finok, and Mark Early and I are working together, and we would like with Dr. Michelle Gail's help to agenda a presentation from Ms. Finok to the Leon County School Board to accept this recommendation that comes now from the Florida Student Body President Association. Knowing that that type of initiative came out of our school district, led by our, our student from Leon High School, this is now going to be a statewide momentum with, with your acceptance, a targeted date to work, to occur in perpetuity in cooperation with the Supervisor of Elections Office, the Tuesday following the King holiday will be designated, with your support and approval, will be designated as a voter registration day, and, and our intent, with the help of my colleagues, Mark Early is going to take it to the statewide Supervisor of Elections Off, um, um, meeting, meeting, association meeting, and I'd like for us, once we ratified as a district, for the Leon County School Board Association, Leon County School Board delegation, and the Superintendent, to take it to our respective statewide meetings for ratification as well.
Hmm, well.
And it will, and it will, and it will be called Madeline's Resolution.
Well, why not, Finok?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Anything else for the good of the cause?
That's it.
I see people wanting to go home, so let's say, call it a night.
Amen.
Meeting adjourned.